Call this the order.
No, I got you.
Right here. Good evening and welcome to the Whitman Hansen Committee, uh, School Committee Meeting of September 30th, 2020. My name is Chris Scriven, I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee and I will be sitting in for Chairman Bob Hayes. Bob has a prior commitment and is unable to attend tonight. As our Chair starts every meeting, I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live on WHCA TV and online. This meeting is also being recorded for use in the future and will be accessible on the WHCA website, so please keep that in mind. We hold this meeting in accordance, thank you. We hold this meeting in accordance with the order from the Governor of Massachusetts on March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mr. Small will be participating remotely tonight. And just to double check, Mr. Small, can you hear us? Fred, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay.
So you can hear the background.
Alright, thank you. So all votes will need to be done by roll call. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also ask if you could join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll take a roll call. Steve Boyce?
Here.
Now, we had, Dan Colley is not here, as of yet. Uh, Mike Jones?
Here.
Chris Howard?
Here.
Hillary Niffen?
Here.
Fred Small?
Here.
Don Byers?
Here.
David Forth?
Here.
And Chris Scriven, here. Okay. First item on the agenda is, uh, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Steve Boyce?
Yes.
Dan Colley, he's not here. Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Don Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes. Thank you. Next is the meeting minutes from September 9th. I'd be looking for a motion for that, to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Second, yeah, discussion? Go on.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a amendment I have submitted to Michelle Lindberg. On page three, it's just a clarification. Um, under student handbooks, the sentence reads, "At the high school, bandanas are not allowed as a face covering." And it's a clarification. I'd like to amend it to read, "In alignment with the memorandum of understanding with WHEA, the committee discussed excluding bandanas in the face covering policy, EBCFA."
Okay.
So the clarification, uh, just to elaborate on that, wouldn't necessarily be specific to the high school. It's district-wide and it includes the policy for district-wide in agreement with the, um, MOU.
Thank you. Alright, so are we looking for a motion to amend?
What, what, what was it though? What was the change?
Sorry.
So the way it reads right now indicates that at the high school, bandanas are not allowed as a face covering. But we discussed and we amended the policy to be district-wide, so if a middle school or elementary student, um, were going to, um, wear a bandana, that would be part of the exclusion of our policy.
Okay. A middle schooler can wear?
Oh, no, no. It's, it's just removing really that says, "At the high school," because essentially-
Clarifying that it's district-wide.
Exactly. That we discussed it to align that it's a district-wide exclusion, that bandanas are not allowed.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nope. Alright, so someone did make a motion already?
Don.
Go on.
I seconded.
Second, David, okay. And roll call vote. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Don Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes. Thank you.
He's in, no.
Alright, the next?
He's in. So, we voted on the-
Oh, I'm correct. And now we're gonna take a vote to approve the minutes as amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Um, so I'll take a motion on-
Motion for that, Mr. Boyce.
Alright, and a second?
Second.
Dalton, okay. Um, any other discussion? Nope, okay. So another roll call vote. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Don Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes. Alright, now puts that to rest. Thank you. And the last one is for the meeting minutes from September 15th. Like, can you get a motion to-
So moved.
Like Fred, a second?
Second, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce, any discussion? David?
Um, I was looking over at the 9:15 joint meeting and there's a couple inaccuracies on there, so I'd like to make a motion to table.
To table?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Can you, what are the inaccuracies?
Yeah, sure, um, so page, oh, let me get the right one. So page three, they say, uh, that George Coffey had emailed the former superintendent and it was Chris George. Um, and then for my review, um, it didn't go into depth about the DESI review and didn't mention the reasoning as to why I brought it forward. And it left out the individuals that I mentioned, but for the other town officials, they had their people that they mentioned in the document. So I think for the sake of accuracy, um, I think everything that I added, my timeline needs to be included, along with the other public officials' timeline who was given.
What was the first thing that you said, David? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's alright, so George Coffey, it says-
But you said it on page three? What paragraph on page three?
Yeah, hold on, let me just, I got papers everywhere.
Actually, page two.
Page two? Okay.
At the second paragraph.
Well, five lines, so.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Oh, here, it's alright.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's George Coffey instead of Chris George. Sorry about that.
Okay.
And then the, if we're doing it by paragraph, I'd say, first, second, third, fourth, fifth. Uh, the sixth paragraph, six, yeah, that one, uh, I think needs more detail, considering that we spent four paragraphs talking about the other town official. And I think for the sake of accuracy, it should mention everything that was spoken about on there, considering the meeting.
Michelle?
Could I ask that Mr. Boyce can provide what you would like in the minutes?
Yeah, sure, could, yeah, can I email it to you? Cool, thank you.
Mike?
Uh, Michelle, is it through, um, is it easier, like, when, once we get these and we notice an inaccuracy? Like normally we email Michelle and say, "Hey, can you change this?" And normally, is that easier for you?
It, it doesn't matter.
Rather than come here and, and do that, or?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Whatever works.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Do we get a second from Dawn? Yeah, so I'll take a roll call vote to table. The meeting minutes from, September 15th, 2020. Steve Boyce?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Don Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, um, we had Bob Rogers, who will be here tonight, but he's just not here yet, so we're gonna hold off on that. And we'll go right, um, to the superintendent's report and we'll start with, um, John Tuffy, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yep?
John, can you come up and, uh, give our end-of-the-year report and closeout, please?
So in the packet that you have, you should see a, a page that deals with the line item transfers. Um, it's pretty standard, it's the sort of thing that's happened at, at this meeting of the, every year. All, all this does, um, with your vote, what we will do is, is move items be, move amounts between different line items so that none of, none of the budgets, um, are in negative numbers. Um, this doesn't increase or decrease the, the final budget that we have, doesn't change the spending, it just, it just ensures that, again, the actual expense lines don't, don't exceed 100% of the budget.
Okay. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve-
Please.
The closeout of FY 2020 budget report as presented.
So moved.
Second? David, second, yeah. Any discussion? Dawn?
I have a question.
Sure.
John, can you just, um, explain, so these, starting right at the top, so Indian Head Elementary Teacher Salary, this hundred and 3,000, is that, um, a surplus in that line that will move to accommodate a deficit in another line? And-
That is, so we're, we're adding to that line item. That's a credit to that line item, there, it was in deficit. And as you look further down, you can see, um, um, the substitute line item for Indian Head also had a debt, is now being debited $249. There was a surplus in that line item.
Okay.
So if it's a, if it's a positive number on this, it means it was a negative number on the financial report, on the budget report, and vice versa.
Okay.
Okay.
And where it says, "Change to budget" and there's, and there's no number there, that is not an accident. That's if you added up each of these line items, um, you'd come to zero.
Any other discussion?
Um, are we gonna go over this separately? I just had a question on the other-
We'll talk about that separately.
Separate, fair enough.
If I, if I could, could we get the vote out of the way, please?
I'm sorry, John?
I, I said if I could, could we get, get the vote done and then you move on to the next part?
Sure. Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call vote. Steve Boyce?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Don Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes. Alright.
So now the next part of the closeout actually is to talk a little bit about the, about what happened last year. Um, when you look at the end-of-the-year budget reports, and there are two of them, one deals with revenue, the other deals with expenditures. What you'll see is that we, we spent 98.6% of the expense budget, um, and we collected 98.4% of the revenue budget. And there are some reasons for that. And at this point, I may as well mention that you also have seen the E and D report. We managed to get it into the state about on the, I think it was the 12th or 13th of September, and they turned it around quickly. We were among the early, early in, people who put it in. The committee may remember, early on, we talked about revenue shortfalls that we expected from the pre-K program and the full-day program. That was full-day kindergarten program, and that was a function of, of, we stopped collecting fees in March and in fact returned some, some fees to people who had prepaid. Uh, the total amount of tuitions that were returned were $294,000. Additionally, when you look at the revenue side of the, of this, you'll see where there are, um, it appears as if we hadn't collected all our funds from our member towns when it came to non-mandated transportation. And that was deliberate, because we had talked about the fact that we would refer, return to the member towns a portion of the savings that, that we got from the bus company when it came to non-mandated transportation. And that amounted to $113,000. So even with those two unusual events happening, our E and D is now certified at $609,000, which is slightly more than what we were certified for last year. Last year it was $605,000. The $609,000 number includes the use of $350,000 of E and D, um, in this year's budget. To maybe add a little perspective to that, at the, the E and D for last year was certified at $605,000. Uh, we are using $350,000 towards the budget. The net of that is $255,000. That's what we would have if we came out even, if we'd received as much as we spent. So the fact that we have 200, $609,000, um, means that we have put $355,000 back into E and D, which is fund balance or free cash if you're a municipality. And it also means that really for the first time in a, in a number of years, we are adding, even if it is a modest amount, we are adding to E and D, not, not using E and D. We are starting to do what we should, should be doing, which is building up a, a rainy day fund. Um, and of course, the other part is that we are using $350,000 in E and D, but that is a reduction from what we've been doing these last few years, as, last many years as well. So we're sort of a little less dependent on it. So all in all, I think, as, as the finance side of the school department, I think those are all good signs.
Chris?
So, uh, just a couple comments, I think. Uh, so one, uh, to Mr. Tuffy's point, yes, uh, the $4,000, $5,000 is definitely a move in the right direction, but I would not classify that, nor do I think you would as a material amount, right?
It is, it is-
We're not really moving the needle, so to speak, much. So I, I think that's important to understand, and I think for the folks that are watching, that are listening in, that the number that we have in front of us, that 5% number that we could have of 2.7 million, that is a big difference from the 600 and 9,000 we are at today. So, uh, we do have a lot of work to do, I think, when it comes to making sure that there is some level of stabilization in terms of our excess and deficiency. And I think the last point was just, I know when we voted to take the funds out of E and D to support the budget, I think both you and Jeff had to do some pretty healthy guesswork in terms of trying to help us understand what we could potentially take out and kind of maintain. So to come within $4,000, that's, that's pretty good, so I think you both did a, a good job of that, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and, and maybe to add a little more perspective to that, in 2015, the E and D balance here was a million four. In 2016, it was a million three. In 2017, it was a million two. Um, and in 2020, it was $605,000. So there has been a, a slow erosion of, of, of E and D balance, for lots of good invalid reasons. But I think we've all agree, we've probably come to the end of the road and, and looking at that as a, as a solution to budget deficits.
And, Chris, I'd mention that the 5% that you mentioned, Chris, that's a recommendation by DESI, I believe, is that right?
I think that's the, so I think that's the, uh, the maximum.
Yeah, if, if I could, 5% is the total amount that, uh, is the maximum amount that a school district is allowed to have in E and D by the state.
Yeah.
And actually by state law.
Okay.
DESI does not make a recommendation to the best of my knowledge and belief. Having said that, I think that, that sort of best practice is, uh, in some places to try to get to 5% and build up to that number, knowing that you might have a capital project coming about or some one-time expenditures. Certainly not anything that's on a recurring basis. Um, and in fact, I have seen a number of, of districts that, that talk about it will be no less than 2%, it'll be no greater than, uh, 3.5%. And then in cases where we're trying to build up something for a upcoming project, you may build up something on top of that.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Dawn? Uh, one second, Fred. Dawn?
Okay, thank you. Several months ago, the committee and Jeff received a letter regarding our bond rating too, for the district. And, uh, that indicated that our bond rating went down. And, um, it's my understanding that may be related to the, um, you know, having less E and D as reserves?
Well, so back up for a second. And, and part of a, a standard review that, um, Standard and Poor's does of outstanding credits, and we still have, we still have several million dollars' worth of debt outstanding on this building that we're in right now, in the high school building, um, they review credits. And yes, we were downgraded, um, based upon a number of things. Some of it was things beyond our control. The general state of the economy, our dependence on state aid, um, the fact that Massachusetts, at that point in time, did not have a budget. That didn't help. But it also was mentioned and mentioned prominently that we had, we had fund balances that had been decreasing over time, and we were showing a greater, greater reliance on fund balances, a way of up, funding our operating budget. So it wasn't the only, wasn't the only issue, but it certainly was prominent in their concerns.
Thank you. Fred?
Uh, John, uh, do you happen to know off the top of your head what our OPEV liability is at right now?
I don't.
And should we develop a plan, uh, in conjunction with the E and D, uh, to be funding that?
Well, the district has a separate, um, OPEV account and I, and, and those people who manage those funds, it's part of a Plymouth County program, um, have come and visited with the committee, I think, every February for quite some time. Certainly the February I was here, they did. Um, the committee had made a number of deposits in relatively modest amounts, but nonetheless a start, uh, for several years. And then for these last few years, um, they had not been contributing to, to that OPEV fund. And that was really, I think, a function of the budget issues that we had here, um, and the fact that we were also seeing increases, um, in our, in our Plymouth County retirement liability.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Chair.
Go on, yeah.
One more question.
Sure.
If we're referring to the year-end report, um, I noticed a couple line items, um, in regards to general supplies, Jeff, at the middle school specifically, um, and it, and library instructional materials. And it's just sort of an overall question. Um, it totals, uh, with both middle schools about $10,000. And, um, I've had a parent or, and I know as a parent of past middle school students, um, my real concern is, is reading books, essentially getting books in students' hands. COVID right now is a different story, because we're utilizing some audio books, I understand, and maybe sharing books or so forth. So my real question is, you know, are we, um, utilizing the supply budget line appropriately to, you know, get books in students' hands, um, so they can read? You know, we talk about screen time too, you know, are audiobooks the best when they're already doing screen time? Sometimes kids like to curl up on a couch and just read. Um, it, it's been presented, um, that if, if parents can go out and buy the book, that would be helpful. If you need one, we can provide one as a district, so the district is offering that still. So that's, um, something I noticed and something I've heard from parents about, you know, the availability, that we're just not having enough of the, you know, simple chapter books, The Outsiders or other middle school-level books.
Are those line items, Dawn?
Oh, sure.
Are they on?
Sure.
Do these have pages?
I, I think if, is the top right, the page number four? Okay, so page four, HMS, um, about the sixth one down, Gen Supplies. And I'm looking at, uh, available budget, 2,000. And then several lines down for their HMS Library Instructional Materials. Again, I don't know if this is what we would use for additional reading books, 1,000 available there.
I think library books would be books that the students would take out of the library, as opposed to student books that the kids are getting from their ELA teachers. I would think those would be two different line items, but I don't know.
Instructional supplies are different line items than library supplies.
Right, yeah.
Correct. Library, each library has, has a supply budget to, to recirculate. As you know, we really only have two librarians in the district. The high school had a full librarian who's now out for COVID and working with elementary students. And Hanson's librarian slash librarian actually teaches a full load of classes. So in district, we have para-support in our libraries outside of the high school, and I think that would be ideal. But if you look at, if we dig into, when we present our budget again in February, if you look at what we provide for instructional supplies district-wide, we're poor. I mean, not poor financially, we don't provide anything in instructional materials. George, as the middle school principal, myself as the high school principal, that line item hasn't shifted since 2010. Um, so I think we can look at how we want to provide or use, utilize the money and the resources we get from the communities to provide instructional materials. And I agree with you, Dawn, the, the reading books are, are great for kids. And then this year, and I'm already jumping forward, we're gonna be looking at devices as well. So I think we can look at those line items and look at how we appropriate them and how the principals actually spend that money for the circulation, for the, for the publications in the library. I know in our classrooms right now, we are short of books to hand out to kids, uh, in all the districts. And our teachers have been outstanding in recycling and collecting donations so that, that we can put books in kids' hands. That's where, that's what happens when we're, we're in the bottom third of the, of the, of the state.
And books cost a lot of money also, like a set of permabound books to give, like a, like a class set of The Outsiders. Like those cost a lot more money than you actually think. Like, in my district, at the end of the year, we're always short, you just lose books, like kids don't like Chromebooks. Like, if the Chromebooks didn't come back in, from March, like textbooks and, and literature books didn't come back too, I'm sure. Um, and they cost more money, I think, than we think. But the other thing too, I don't know, Jeff, in the district, are, can kids take a book out of the library and do like the 72-hour, like, drop back in?
So, George is gonna jump in on that.
So, so what's happened, um, to the libraries? What, what we've done is we've shrunk, uh, as budgetary, budgets shrink and we've lost people in the libraries, what we tried to hold on, and there's two different things we're talking about, but if you're talking about increasing the circulation and getting books in the hands of students, we always tried to make sure that, whether it's the paraprofessional or the remaining librarians, we at least did, uh, it was called like the Book of the Month Club. It was something you pay about $2,000 for. We always did it usually, sometimes didn't come out of the library line, but it was, you would receive 20 books a month over 12 months, so at least you'd get 244 new books of high interest, Call to Call winners, Newberry winners, into your library. We still try to do that in our libraries, not necessarily this year, because it's so different, but that's what we do. When it comes back to the classroom set, I know what you're saying, having been a former middle school principal, that the amount of money you would pay for the one classroom set would be astronomical when you think about what you could get that book for on Amazon, let's say. So you could get the paperback of, I don't know, Ivan the Great, or The Mighty Ivan, or whatever book. And then you might get it $5.99 on Amazon, but when you get a permabound, and permabound is basically, if you can think back, it's sort of like taking a paperback and almost making it like a textbook. You know, it's like that hard plastic, it fixes the, the binding a little bit, and so you can keep it for years. When those things happen, you're now, it's astronomical, so we've always tried to pair share and do books. I think at the highlight, when we had a lot of money at the time coming in, we would get the double-class sets per grade. So that teacher A would have the class set and teacher B would also have a class set, so the whole, let's say, eighth grade reads it at the same time, and then those books go away and they go on to the next one. But I do agree that instructional supplies and library materials is something we really need to look at as we move forward. Like Jeff said, I think we're gonna talk a little bit more about one of, some of the initiatives we have as we go forward to equal the playing field. It's a technology component, but there are things out there now from our new reading program at the elementary school, and then also what's called, um, Epic, which is an online library for kids, that hopefully can address that to make sure we're a little more equitable in the future.
Thank you. I think if we can get what that actual cost is for the permabound sets, it would be nice for the committee to understand how much it really would be, to put a book in every eighth grader's hand, or seventh grader's-
So if you, I, if I remember, if I remember correctly, you're looking at, you're looking at like $1,300 for a class set for permabound.
Okay.
And that's for a novel. That's not for, that's not for a textbook, that's not for a Basil Reader, that's not for a program at the middle school. Um, and it's something that always sadly doesn't end up, ends up on the floor of the budget cut, because then you have teachers who do the right thing and work hard and go above and beyond, and they might get their scholastic points if they order books with kids and they use their own points to get some books. We go with, like our program with the public libraries, where they'll get sets, but no, you raised an excellent point.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking also on page three, is the Whitman Middle School, um, in that general supply line is, is very minimal. It's $8,000 for the entire school, so you just referenced-
You are correct, and everything comes out of that. Your pencils, your pens, your planners, your, uh, everything that you need from a non-educational standpoint, so much so that it also becomes the consumables that your science department needs. So that's why, pre-COVID, you have dances, that's why you have fundraisers, that's why you have all of those things, because in the mind of a principal, they're saying, "You guys do what you need to do, but I still have to make sure I can run my building." So you look for ancillary methods to do it. Now, that's just the state we've been in since, you know, since I've been here since 2004, and hopefully we're on a path, now that we have such a modest, you know, modest gains, that, uh, that we can start to get-
Three sets of books.
That we can start to get on a point though, that those are the discussions that we start having, and those are the planning that we start having, so we can actually make sure we have a level playing field for all students. So I agree with you, Dawn.
Right. Thank you. And I appreciate that these balance of available funds have gone into E and D. It's not like the money just disappears and goes by the wayside. Um, but if there is an available budget, um, you know, I would have, I would like to see that it's used. We've budgeted for supplies, so I see, uh, an availability there, leftover, um, at those schools. So, thank you for sharing.
Okay, any other discussion? Anything else, John? No?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to vote.
You need to vote on that, right? You need to vote, John, correct?
So, I think, Michelle, could you clarify what we just took the vote on? Cause I may have misspoke. I may have said the budget and not the line item transfer?
Mr. Howard motioned, Mr. Ford seconded to approve the 2020 final transfers.
Final transfers.
Okay, so now we're gonna vote on the, uh, the-
Do we need to vote on the closeout?
You don't have to give a vote, okay?
You're good.
We're all set?
We're all good.
Okay.
This is true.
Alright, thank you. Okay, uh, Superintendent?
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. So, on your table, I, I gave you a self-assessment that I'd like you to review over the next couple of weeks and provide feedback. This showed what I feel we did as a district, what I did as, as a superintendent in, in some abbreviated term from night, from September of 19 through September of 20. From this document though, I've asked you, or as I asked you a couple of weeks ago, I need your help as I prepare my goals. Superintendent goals, usually superintendents have four goals, sometimes six. Two goals being a professional, a professional goal for myself, professional improvement, and then a student learning goal. The other two goals are district-oriented. And what I asked you to do for homework, and this is the first time I think this committee is going to discuss what you see the needs of the district are. I asked you to come up with some, some district goals. And I also preface that to not really think about it in terms of budget or finances. What this committee, what you as individual school committee members would like to see me look at this year in those two district goals. So I kind of opened it up to, to members of the committee who would like to volunteer. I feel like I'm a teacher in class. Who's going to raise their hand first? But who would like to share, and Michelle's going to be taking some notes, and I'm going to take all of this information, and we don't have to vote on it. This isn't a votable, this is a discussion item. And I'd like to just really hear what you think. So then I can structure my goals with George. We can talk about it internally and say, this is, these are two of the, two of the top priorities, and these other, these are other things that we could potentially work on as a district. I have some things in the back of my mind already that I'm seeing as we opened up in September. What we look at is the district. We have some things on the table already that we need to work on as a district. But I really want to hear from the committee as to what you see specifically for, for 2021 you would like me to put on as a district goal and for, for me to work on this year. So I open it up to, to members of the committee to share.
Did you say you wanted us to look at this for the next?
Yeah, for the next meeting. Student, the self-assessment, it's, it's five pages long. So I kind of want you to read it for, for the next meeting. And give me feedback if you see some, or, or question, uh, question that. I didn't want to take committee's time tonight and read it through. So, but I'm really looking for discussion now on what, where you want, what you want me to focus on on district-wide, what we can work as, as a leadership team to work on district-wide. And really kind of take off the, oh my goodness, it's going to cost too much money. Throw it out there, and then we can see as we formulate the budget, those costs, and maybe put it in a two- or three-year plan. But specifically what you would like to see representing your community, our district as a whole, for me to put down and drive us forward this year. Mr. Boyce, well, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Boyce.
I just heard, Dawn, I don't mind going after, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, one of the things I thought was remarkable was the idea when, and I know it had to do with space and so forth, but bringing the preschoolers up here and having that sort of integration. And when I ran for reelection in, in the spring, I mentioned that as one of my things. I thought, why can't we collaborate more across grades? And I don't know how that would work, or what that would be like, or how that. I, I mean, I almost consider it like, maybe in a way, it's kind of a strategic thing, or it's, it's one of our, you know, engagement things. I don't know. But I mean, it just seemed to be ideal. And I know this wasn't the past, this past year, it wasn't the year to say, hey, will you take us on a trip through there? Because, you know, once, as you mentioned, March 13th hit, it was a whole different game. But a couple of things, and I think it probably is brought out because of the COVID world is, is that, and more doing things outdoors. I mean, we sent our kids in. I, I remember being at the Indian Head School and spending time in the town forests across the way. Yeah, maybe there's a lot of liabilities, but, but start somewhere else. I mention, I keep saying build a solar system in, in the, in the hallways of the schools and give students the idea of like, yeah, that is quite a ways away. Use that backfield in, behind Indian Head. I know these sound like, more like other type of ideas and not specifically yours or, or whatever. But it, it, just a couple of things if, if they can be grown off of, or whatever. And I'm not trying to mess up our whole school system and say, hey, Steve, we're just straightening out all the schools. You know, we can't now put sixth graders back in the Conley or, or, or anything like that. It's, it's not so much like that. But just the idea, and, and trying to still foster with that.
We might have a Vanna White up there right now. So when you shut out your things, George might be writing them down.
He's a big source of, you want my goals to listen to the superintendent? Because he didn't want me, I didn't really want to do this. Do I have collaboration across grade levels, outdoor educational opportunities?
Can I mention a third one?
I think you can do whatever you'd like.
Okay.
I asked for, for two to four, Mr. Boyce.
Okay, well, all right. We'll go with three. Three's a nice number. The mass conferences, and I know this year it's a whole different beast. It, it's not happening in November or whatever. At least the executive meetings happen, happening. Mass and mass. One of the years I went, when Dr. Whitman was here, and we were sitting down, and we, we listened to, I, I forget the, um, the gentleman's name. But they talked about how global learning. You're sit, you're stu, you're a student, you're sitting in front of a computer, and, you know, you're listening to a classroom in Japan, or you're listening to a classroom in. And, and before we had the China, I want to say exchange teachers here. You know, we've had a lot of different programs. We just delved in in an emergency way in the, telling our kids, you're going to have to learn online for a little while until we get all this sorted out. Why not almost, almost continue like that? I know everyone wants to get back in the schools altogether, and that would be ideal. But I still think there's, there's a tangible there that can come off of, why can't we keep that, that? Not, even if it's not global, even if it's local, or even within us, I mean, it, it, it could be something. And I tell you all about the presidential libraries until I'm blue in the face probably, and you, you, you don't want to listen to me after a while. But I use that as an example because it's, it's, it's a system that isn't often understood. And once you put it out there and say, you could go to all of these, take your passport, book, and, and move. And that's just an, an example of something like that. But that, that would be my third one. And I, I saw that as a good opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
I got Dawn first, Fred, then I'll go to you.
I would say full-day kindergarten, universal kindergarten for incoming students. I looked at our reopening plan, and should the governor close us down, our school hours for high school kids start at 9:00 AM. So my second would be healthy start times for all students to look at that. We appreciate John Tuffy's work, but I don't know that he's on board for a third semester. So I don't know if that falls under district goals, but certainly some focus on, you know, full-time replacement in that position is real important.
I'm sorry, you didn't hear that.
Replacing John.
Replacing John.
In about four years.
Yeah. So that's kind of my side, side note. And certainly maintaining a technology plan and replacement plan yearly to replenish devices.
All set, Dawn?
Yes.
Fred?
Okay. And I'll leave this to administration to, when you have a list to prioritize. Practical use in the high school for businesses or advertising classes. Let's send kids out to, you know, be able to sell advertising and learn how to, you know, operate quote-unquote in the real world. I think that some of life's lessons could be incredible lessons. One-to-one devices, I know that was just mentioned. Foreign languages, but not to bring them back for the middle school, but to start them in elementary and really foster the proper education because it is a global economy. Chapter 74 programs that perhaps are not taught at VOTAC. I know Jeff, you had discussion about nurses at one point, or nursing program. Different advantages that we can take there. That could help us both budgetarily as well as, you know, being able to expand our offerings, so to speak. I believe that's my four.
Thanks, Fred.
Hillary?
I just, I guess this is one, but I would like to see a plan, I don't know if there's a plan. Can you hear me? For like diversity, equity, inclusion training, like social justice training for staff, for students. That's a big, it, it, and not even, like, including it in the curriculum, you know, from, you know, I know that my children are in first and second grade, and a lot of things they're doing is kind, being kind, and what do you do at the playground to be kind? The high school level, you know, what are the kids learning? What are they reading? Are they reading books by old white men who are dead? Are they reading more contemporary things? You know, getting that in, and that's, that's going to take a lot of work on the curriculum side, and it's not going to be done in two months, but at least starting to think about it. And I see things on Twitter that educators in the district are already doing along those lines, but to have something a little more formal. Training for teachers too, myself, like to have those conversations in a classroom, that's a hard thing to do, you know?
Good, Vanna.
Yeah, George.
So I can speak to that. So I'm glad you brought that up, like we talked. One of the things we're looking at is we're in our fourth year now, formal fourth year of the Excel Coalition. So the Excel Network is something that Whitman-Hanson's been a part of. And that stands for Excellence in Social Emotional Learning. It's through the Rennie Center. It's also through Transforming Ed. We're one of 22 districts in the state that are still with it in its fourth year. And this whole year, so what we've done internally in a quick snapshot is what we've done in the district is take the CASL. CASL is the Center for Advancement of Social Emotional Learning. It's out of California. But they produce pieces that students need, that adults need to have healthy, proper life. Self-awareness, self-responsibility, resiliency, all of these pieces. And we've worked on that in this district, K to 12, for the past three years. So now in the fourth year, the, the theme of this is transformative SEL. So transformative SEL is taking those topics like shared responsibility, like self-awareness, like self-management, and saying, how do we identify, how do we do this as a culture and a system? To not only let people have an identity, let people belong, but also let people have a sense of agency. And what does agency mean? It means that they have a sense to say, we need to critically look at what we read. We need to critically look at what we teach. We need to look at the system itself so we can end up in a place of justice. So justice is after equity, after equality, it gets to justice. And that's when the system will change so that everyone themselves can have an equal part and can all prosper. Now, that goes along with not only what's happening in society, but it goes along with the meat and potatoes of what's happening now in our district from a standpoint of our social, emotional, socioeconomic groups, from our English language learner groups, from our groups that are underrepresented. And there's things in our plan that you'll see that specifically address these. But then it also gets to the bigger picture of what's happening in society. What do we read? What are we reading? What voice do we give to our students? What voice do we give to our staff? So that's a big piece of what it is that is going to be in our, it's in our strategic plan that you'll see. And it's going to be one of the themes that we have this year with our Excel Network. The Excel Network we have in the district is 11 individuals from every school and from multiple levels within schools. So it goes from a nurse, it goes from a principal, it goes from classroom teachers, middle school teachers, elementary teachers, high school folks. So we're really trying to look at it from the whole system of what we do here so that we can not only produce better for the system of education with enhancement, but so that we can produce better for the society that we all live in.
Yep.
Anybody else? David?
I just have a list right here. Most of my papers are on community engagement, but I'll just read off a couple. Enrollment, Hold Harmless, Mental Health, Addressing Education Equity.
Hold on one second.
You might want to just give me a paper.
So can I ask a clar-
Like, you know, like Dawn was saying, Full Day K. And like Fred was saying, add, you know, something to compete with VOTAC and their program.
So David, just to clarify, enrollment, I'm not sure what.
Well, well, we're in Hold Harmless right now. So in order to get a Hold Harmless, one of the things we're going to need to do is work on enrollment, and we're going to need to get more people in the district. So I say we should orient our goals around that and getting out of Hold Harmless, especially with chapter, uh, chapter 70 reforms after the Student Opportunity Act. So then mental health, education, equity.
Hold on one second, David.
Mental health, yeah. We already mentioned tech, but special education improvements. Public transparency, which would tie in with community engagement. And to make sure we're creating student-first oriented policies. And then my last one. Was just saying that as a committee, we should be working on robust, community-engaged initiatives. That way we're out in the community. People are under, like are aware of what's going on. There isn't any narratives going out about, you know, the school's trying to do this and that. Everyone knows what's being said. It's transparent. It's honest. It's coming directly from the source. It's coming from us. And there isn't people on like, you know, I don't know, Whitman Pride or something saying this or that. You know, we have the opportunity to get to our community before someone else kind of intercepts, if that makes any sense.
Excuse me, but we select robust.
Oh, yeah. Uh, robust, community-engaged initiatives. And that's what I have for the plan.
That's all, that's it, Dave?
Oh, yeah. That's it for strategic. I'll talk more for community.
Okay. Chris?
So just two high-level, I think we've already covered some of it, but one really around whatever we decide with community engagement. And I think that's more defined as making sure the community understands the what, why, how. So a little bit more richer in terms of, there's a lot of great things that happen throughout the district, but understanding the why. Why are we doing some of the things that we do? Because I think that really helps bridge everything that's been caused. And then a little bit, I guess a continuation of kind of where Steve was going. I think with everything that's happened in terms of the pandemic and how it's changed things, I almost want to suggest that you guys kind of come up with your own BHAG, or really big crazy goal in terms of what does the delivery of education look like in 20 years? So we can kind of work towards that, right? Because if you look at education and post-World War II, kind of what's happened? Yeah, you had computers and internet, but the delivery has still kind of been kind of a consistent push. So I think there's really an opportunity, like Steve said, with some of the things that have transpired, even with some of the stuff that Fred's talking about, like, how can we be different? Not to be better or, hey, we're better, no. If we're really thinking about the future of education, why wait for something fundamental to shift? Why not start to think about what that looks like? And then if we kind of have a little bit of a vision, we, the steps that we're taking today can kind of align to that. So it's more of, the goal would be to develop what that big future of education looks like for this district. I understand, and I deal with this all the time. So I understand and appreciate you'll have to deal with certain regulations that need to be followed. There's certain things that need to be done. This is how it was always done. But I think this is the time to really think about the future in terms of, you know, how can we be a little bit different, innovative in terms of that delivery?
Mike?
Yes. Most of mine were already touched upon through other people. But the one I do have is, can we work on a facilities plan, worked on 100% transparency with our boards of selectmen and finance committee and keep it up to date?
Yep. Okay. And George, I just wonder if I can buy a bow.
Yeah, there you go.
No, on a serious note, the, uh, my biggest issue, even before I decided to run for school committee, was the culture, right? So much, and I see it, Jeff, you have it in here, professional culture and different aspects of, of culture. But I, I just think it's imperative for any- aspects of, of culture, but um, I, I, I just think it's imperative, um, for any, any level to, um, at any interface between the school district and the uh, community, to um, you know, just basically be kind and empathetic, a, a, and inclusive, um, you know, it all kinda ties together to not only um, getting more people involved and more support, but creating the best environment to educate children, right? Um, whether it's, you know, um, on the sports field, or, you know, when you walk in the building, or, you know, uh, anything, really. I think it, to be more mindful of, um, you know, the fact that we're here, uh, to provide a service to our community, right? A, a, and that, that's what's most important to me, I think.
Thanks. Danny, got it?
Yeah, um, most of them are in touch already, um, the only thing I think I could add, most of the people already said it, is engagement with the, it's kinda hard to do right now with COVID, but have like, maybe town hall sessions, where you can be out there with a couple of us there, you know, people, you know, because we're always like, I guess we're educating people constantly, like, I think Chris was pointing that out, we're not getting some of that information out there, and we gotta pound that back. Um, you know, the, the, the biggest thing I think we have to do is transparency, in, in every level, we have to get that out there better. Um, and to touch on what Chris was saying, equity across the line for all these grades, there's certain things that aren't done, it's always, you know, it's, we have to be very, very consistent with this, we're not good at that. Um, you know, nothing else that everybody else has already brought up, you know, but I just thought maybe it's a bad time to try to do a town hall with the COVID, but eventually get something like that kicked in. And I do like what Mike was saying about the facilities also.
So, just, I love the list. So the, the, nothing on that list hasn't been talked about in my office between George and myself, and if this committee is allowing us to just, you know, think outside the box, we've already have some, to go to your plan, what education looks like in 10 years, we have a new middle school project coming up, we're already thinking post-middle school, how can we transform this district into a unique district? So, giving us this opportunity to look at, and when I say us, because I, I feel my goals will trickle out to everybody in the district, if this committee has us focusing on some of those things, and, and Hillary, yours is already in goal number two for me for professional practice, I think that's imperative this year especially, um, looking at this, these district goals, these are all something we can collaborate on, and when I say district-wide, we'll put these in, but I'm gonna need your help as a committee to be united in these. And if we move into that one-to-one initiative, with a full tech, you know, looking at infrastructure and tech, one-to-one, what does that mean? It's not just a device in somebody's hand, we have to look at how we're gonna educate the students using that device and train the teachers. So when I'm asking for money in the budget, we will talk as a committee about why, the whys of needing that, and I need this committee to spread out and send that message out, it's not just a device, the students are gonna have to learn how to use that device, and the teachers are gonna have to modify their lessons to that device, which costs a little bit more, a little less, or whatever, as we, we tend to move forward. So all of the things that you've shared with us are things that we've talked about, and I'm really glad we're all on the same page, nothing was, was way outside that I'm thinking, or George is thinking, or this committee is thinking. These are things that I think are attainable, that I can put in as goals, and we can benchmark it, and you can measure them as we go along. So, thank you for sharing this, this list, I will look at the two, two, two goals, um, from the district, we might add a third, um, because I, I did, the MSBA project for us in that middle school is gonna be a, a district thing that I'm gonna need your assistance on as well. As we're looking at the feasibility study, talking about what we want in a new building, that will be a goal of mine, whether it's, it's a formal goal, or it's an informal goal, that's something that I wanna make sure that we see through, uh, and get that new middle school project going. So, thank you for this, is there any other, any other comment on the, on the district goal piece?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Small.
If I could add one thing, and that is, if we can come up with a way, whether it's by going through the packs, and holding separate smaller meetings, or having larger meetings, but getting community involvement in what they're looking for in the district, and what they're looking for for their kids to be taught, uh, I think would be imperative.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I get ner, uh, I'll be very honest, I get nervous when I ask the community what we're gonna teach students. I think we have standards, and we have a state curriculum that we follow, and different people in, in different areas might have different ways they want their, 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 their students taught. I do appreciate, though, get soliciting community input on what they wanna see and how the district moves. So, I, I hear that, and we'll see what we can do, and then, when we talk about engagement, I think that's a, another area that we can focus in on, and looking at a, a town hall, or, or how we can engage the community in, in, in a way, so that their voice can be heard, and how they wanna see this district moving forward in the next five, 10, 15 years. Oh, Don?
Just wanted to add two comments as a follow-up to, to these items, um, as Hillary mentioned, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, a year ago, I attended an, that MAS C conference, and there was a, um, seminar on this, and I felt like at the time, these can somewhat be buzzwords, that people don't, and they hear it, and the explanation that really hit home with me and resonated, um, an analogy, if you will, diversity, uh, it was explained to me as similar to, if you have a party and you invite everyone, so that's diversity. Equity is everyone who comes to the party gets to add to the playlist of the music, their own.
That's tough.
And inclusion, equity, inclusion is actually having everyone on the dance floor together. So I thought, that was just, I just wanted to expand on that, um, to me, that was, uh, really interesting. And second, um, Mr. Small mentioned chapter 74, um, and how we could maybe begin to talk about adding programs, and he said nursing. Um, I, my daughter at the high school was invited to a new club, which is pre-med club at the high school, so there are people interested in medicine and science, right here in our building. Superintendent, would you be able to explain a little about chapter 74, and what we could do and can't do, as that relates to social VOTEC?
So, I, I can't go deep into that, because I don't know exactly the rules around what we can take from VOTEC. I know we can look at different types of programs within the, within the district, um, and apply for chapter 74, one of those areas we were looking at was potentially culinary, and, and moving that forward. But Fred and I spoke a couple years back about bringing in more of an online resource around vet tech, um, X-ray technician, things like that, where students can actually attain a certification and walk out of here, and either be certified, or go, or, or, or have a year of Massa Soyet knocked off their belt. So those are programs that I can look at to, to bring in, and I know it's a, I don't know if it's competitive against VOTEC, and John, I don't know if you know more about chapter 74 than I do, but that's not something I'm well-versed at, so I don't wanna misspeak, and we can, we can look at that for another meeting. I don't know if you know anything about chapter 74, um, and what we can do and what can't do as a regional school district? Not to put you on the spot, but I will.
So, I think everybody, there we go, I think everybody knows, I previously was at Silver Lake Regional School District, and Silver Lake is a comprehensive high school, um, which means that we have the regular academic program that you have here, but we also had, I think it was six, but I'd have to, it would take me a minute to go around the room and count the different shops, that were chapter 74 programs. Chapter 74 is just a different funding formula than chapter 70, which is what we get here. Um, and it is very specific about, about supervision and the resources that you, that you have to have. Now, you're a member of Salsara VOTEC, um, but there's, as far as I remember, there's nothing that would, that would preclude you from being in competition with them, although that's sort of an expensive way to, to, to move forward, so you'd be looking for programs that, that, um, aren't readily available, uh, there. They are expensive to run, because they are, they require a lot of equipment that is not inexpensive, and a lot of supervision in some programs, that might have a risk that it's involved with them, um, but it often appeals to a different group of students, students who, who are somewhat more focused perhaps than, than the student that's looking forward to a college experience in liberal arts, and at that point, they're looking to make a decision as to what direction their life will take. Um, it's, it's often somebody who maybe has more of a goal of, of graduating high school and going into the workforce, although the numbers more or less say that about two-thirds of, of all students, and, and I don't believe it's changed, about two-thirds of all students who leave a, leave a vocational high school go on to additional training. Now that may be a four-year school, like a Wentworth or UMass for, um, horticulture, uh, it, it may be a two-year program for an associate's degree, that, that puts them on a path to a four-year degree, or just a two-year program that gives them additional skills or, um, certifications in various areas. But it is, it is a commitment the district would have to make, um, and chapter 70, so the vocational education program at, at DESI is separate, uh, group, and we really would start with talking with them about what we, what it would require.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Um, just to add to that, is there anything at the high school, um, like a senior project or an internship program for seniors that they can go out and shadow a veterinarian, for example, or do, is there a program currently at the high school like that?
We've had that in the past, I don't know where the, what the status is the past year, but we've had that in the past. Uh, it was a school-to-work program, then it was an internship program, the challenge we had there is not necessarily the ability of students wanting to go out, where the, where the people coming in. So, we have worked with, with local town, the local town, we just didn't want people traveling too far away.
Yep.
But that's something we've looked at, we've also looked at, you know, a, uh, diff, another opportunity for kids to leave the building and get hands-on experience in the, in the career field that they're looking for. George?
Yep. I just, before we moved off this topic, I, uh, I just think I wanted to make sure that we talked a little bit about curriculum, and education has a goal this year, and I know one of the things that we, we started this week, and will be in the next two weeks, is that students will now, for this year, for really the first formalized time, will have, um, K to 8 interim assessments in ELA and math. At the elementary school, we're using Inter Reading, which is our new program that was purchased just this year, and in our second year of iReady. At the middle school, we've expanded our offerings with what's called iXL, which is an online platform for reading and math, and that'll go up through the eighth grade. Uh, our goal is to do it three times this year, so that we can really say, okay, where are we at, from where we were, now at the beginning, where are we at, at a midpoint range, and then where did we end up with? And this is a, this is a pretty big movement in our district, because we're finally centralizing our curriculum at the lower levels, thanks to the work that the towns and yourselves have done with our new programs, and then it's also tracking, or it's also allowing us to expand into the middle school with some of the new online components. What Chris said, this pandemic, this pandemic has now sort of changed how we do things, and how we do things from a technological standpoint to assess where kids are at, is some of the new things we're doing now in K to 8, uh, excuse me, in 6 to 8. So I just wanted to let everybody understand that that's for the, we're doing interim assessments, that'll help say where are students at in their growth, and then a path will be developed, so that they can continue to reinforce those skills while still learning the curriculum that they're at. So that, that is something that is going to be a part of our plan, it's also part of our plan to then address those subgroups that may not have, um, achieved as much as they have, or that they may need more support. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we still have the educational component that we're pursuing, and that's one of the main things we're gonna be doing this year with that.
I have a question, um, how often are the curriculums revised? Like, do teachers get together every summer and kinda look at, this is what our plan was, what our math was, we didn't actually get to this, or we?
Yeah, so curriculum, yeah, so curriculum planning takes place, uh, at the element, at the K to 8 level now, it's in his second year with lead teachers. So they have a, we have a curriculum, elementary curriculum director, and that is the work of lead teachers who are per-grade, per-school, um, per-discipline, K to, uh, per dis, uh, per-grade, per-school, K to 5, then per-school, per-discipline at 6, 7, and 8, and then at the high school, we have curriculum coordinators. Curriculum coordinators also have a grades, also have a 6 to 8 piece as an overall SEER. But their responsibility is to say, where are we at? Most of that work has always traditionally been in the summer, that necess, that didn't necessarily get done this summer because of the state we were in, however, they've already started, we have all of our teacher leaders chosen, they've already had their first meetings, and then that trickles out into the individual grade levels in schools with their professional learning communities. So this year especially, that's where we're at. So what we started with this year, with the result of what I just said, is now we have the ability to say, where are the children at? So now we can assess where they're at compared to where they should be at at their grade level, see if there's deficits, or if there's gaps, and then it, some of the programs we have now in ELA and math, then adjust and give them a learning path, so hopefully there's remediation. So the, the adult, the human aspect is to fix the curriculum itself, the technological aspect in a way is what is gonna help define the path that the student needs to move forward.
Thanks, George. Any other questions on, or, or comment on the goals piece? Thank you, uh, do you mind if we go out of order and get Bob Rogers? Not at all, nope. So we will take Bob Rogers, um, let me see now, a proposal from Athletic Director Bob Rogers regarding student athletic transportation waivers and an amendment to the athletic user fee policy during COVID, thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, so the first thing I have for you is an athletic, uh, transportation change to what the current school policy is regarding students riding, um, the school bus. So we give the parents an opportunity, this was reviewed by our school attorney to make sure it was legal, it gives parents the option to allow their child to be driven by another parent, for the child to drive on their own if they have their license, and for the child to drive with another student who meets the, um, the standard by the law, you know, they have to have their license for six months before they can drive another student. So parents are given the option to sign one, two, three, or none of those. Um, the reason for this, a few reasons, the first one is some parents still are not comfortable with their children riding on a bus, um, the second thing is, transportation is kind of at a premium right now, we have limited resources with, for a student, although I will say it's been much better than I thought it was going to be in terms of them meeting our needs, in part because the other school that uses the same office as us, Abington, they don't have as many offerings as we do, um, but we also are gonna be in a financial crunch in the athletic department, we're not gonna have any gate receipts, um, so where we can save money, i, i, it does help. I have made it clear to the coaches to make sure the kids know that, you know, they, they should, if they want a seat on the bus, we will do everything possible to give them a seat on the bus. Uh, this should be if they don't want to take the bus, and that's where we've kind of, um, stressed that with the kids and the families so far. So I would just ask the committee to go ahead and approve this, and again, this has been, uh, reviewed by, um, school council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Transportation.
That was from Dawn, had the motion, and David had the second? Any discussion?
The motion is to approve the waiver as presented.
Correct. No discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Sniffing?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
And Mr. Scriven, yes.
Thank you, uh, the second, uh, item you have in your packet is regard to user fees, uh, knock on wood, I hope this doesn't become something that we're gonna have to deal with, but just trying to be proactive, that if we should face a shutdown, um, so that everybody goes into this with their eyes open in terms of what we would give for refunds. Um, after I met with this committee last time, and we discussed it briefly, and listening to some of the feedback that some of you had, and then I met with Dr. Jones, again, we actually revised this just a little bit, to be a little bit more in favor of the families. Uh, we were doing, uh, two-week increments, instead of what we had before was four, so you can see we basically have a 20% um, assessment for each two-week increment, uh, so if we were to get, um, shut down, you can see it in your packet, it goes from 80, 60, 40, and 20, depending upon where that shutdown happens. Knock on wood, it's not gonna happen, but just in case it does, I do want people, um, to go into it with their eyes open, in terms of when they pay their user fee, they know what it is.
Thanks, Bob. So I entertain a motion to, um, approve the amendment of the athletic user fee policy as presented. So moved. David? And Dan, second. Roll call vote? Oh, go ahead, Fred, yep.
Uh, do we need to place the actual policy number on here? I know we have a policy for athletic fees, do we need to place that, uh, that number on here, so that's exactly what we're approving?
Fred, I don't believe, I could be wrong, um, I don't believe there's actually a written policy, I don't think, Jeff, you might?
I don't think there's a policy, it's a protocol, it's something the committee assesses.
Something that says already in the student handbook, it does say in the student handbook that once the user fee is paid, it's non-refundable for any reason, like if a student leaves, they decide to quit the team, they get kicked off the team for disciplinary reasons, the user fee is always non-refundable. I kind of put this in kind of as in good faith because, you know, it's to nobody's fault if, you know, we get shut down. So, I don't think there's a policy number, but I could be wrong. Michelle just looked it up and she said she doesn't think so.
The benefit of being here, I'm just pulling up file KF dash R, but that's more of the building use than the athletic fees. I thought we did have an athletic fee policy, that could be mistaken, I guess.
I think it's the difference, I think it's probably semantics, the difference between the policy and having it written in the handbook. So in a sense, it's written in the handbook, and then that gets approved by the school committee every year. So I think that's where it gets adjusted when we do adjust it.
So, we're amending the handbook with this?
This is just an addendum to the current user fee protocol that we use.
And I think it was, it's imperative because in it, it's non-refundable. It's cut and dry, we've never experienced this before, and what we talked about is we don't think it's relatively fair and equitable if the season shuts down tomorrow and I've paid 259.
I'm in total agreement with this. I'm just, my concern is that we have it in the right place, so someone can't say that they weren't aware of it.
Understood.
The other thing I should say is it's been communicated to all of the families that are currently participating as they participate. I did put in there, just so I wasn't presumptuous, I said this needed school committee approval on the handout that you have, that they received, I gave that to all the families already. And it does say that it needed your approval for it to be ratified. If you didn't approve it, then actually it would be that they wouldn't get any refund.
You default back to the handbook, so.
Yeah.
Dawn?
I was just going to add, maybe we're looking to just add this as an amendment to the non-refundable language temporarily for this year.
Yes.
Maybe this is a one-year non-refundable policy, we are, I'm sorry, I take that back policy, but.
Yeah, I would say as long as we're in the COVID situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that clear, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So we'll take a roll call. Steve, Voice?
Yes.
Dan Colletti?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Hillary Niffen?
Yes.
Brad Small?
Yes.
Dawn Byers?
Yes.
David Forth?
Yes.
And Chris Scriven, yes.
And then just the last thing, just to, for your own information, because you're probably getting phone calls or emails, my phone's been ringing off the hook in the emails, just regarding the attendance policy. Up until yesterday, we were restricted by the fact that we were in Phase 3 Step 1 in terms of the number of people that we could have at our facilities. So because of that, the Patriot League Athletic Directors voted to only allow home-school parents attend the events with school-issued lanyards so we could identify who is at our facility. That's what we've done. It's been quite a project to do that, to get lanyards to everybody. We've done that. However, yesterday the governor did say, on Monday, we're going to move to Step 2 of Phase 3, which will increase those numbers. I have an athletic director meeting tomorrow, and what we're hoping to do is to adjust that in some way. I don't know what the vote will be, because there are some people that still would just prefer to keep it the way it is. Obviously, it's more manageable this way, but I'm of the mind that the experience that the kids have in athletics is a whole-family experience. It's just as important for mom and dad and the grandparents to be able to go. So I'll be advocating at the meeting tomorrow to raise those numbers with a plan to be able to make sure that we can have social distancing. When it does, when we have our vote tomorrow, I will be putting it on social media, on our Twitter page and our athletic webpage as well. But that's where we are right now, and we're hoping that, right now, the Plymouth community above the athletic director, their superintendent has said, nobody from another town. Hoping that if we all agree that that's the way to go, and we can have like the visitors on the opposite side or in a completely different section, not interacting, that we can work together so that, the season is really short this year. It's 11 games. So when you say you can only go to the home games, you're either talking five or six games. So to lose the away games, I think is, you know, it's, we're going to advocate for it tomorrow, and I will report out how we made out.
Bob, just to clarify, so, parents right now, as of today, only at home games identified by a lanyard. So no students, just immediate family members. How many family members can go?
There's only two per student.
Okay.
There's two per student, and they get the lanyard, and it's sports-specific and level-specific. So for tomorrow, you don't want to be in my shoes tomorrow, because in my first attempt to try to make all this work, we have cross-country home tomorrow, we have field hockey home tomorrow, and we have volleyball home tomorrow. So I will, at each one of those venues, they're all their own venue, will have those restrictions, and will all have their specific, their sport specifics as the level, the name of the sport, and they have certain areas that they can be. They got the lanyards with a letter explaining what they're supposed to do. They have to wear the mask, they have to stay socially distanced. There have been some experience, there you go, Dawn has the lanyard right there. There have been unfortunately some examples elsewhere in the country of some really ugly interactions between athletic administrators and some community members that feel like it's their right, and the reality of it is, we're charged to make sure that we're following state law. And so that's what we will do, and our community usually, you know, knock on wood, I've been here a long time, and people are very respectful. They may not like it, they'll tell me they don't like it, but they're usually very respectful. So I expect people to abide by it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. It's two right now, and if with the, with the AD's meeting, it could, it could raise after Monday?
The motion that I'm making tomorrow is to make it so that every lanyard is worth two guests.
Okay.
So that way, not having to reissue more lanyards, we could just say that those families are able to get that, and then be able to create student lanyards, a certain amount for each game. Be able to do that, and then have those, the Whitman Hansen Lanyard honored at an away game. So you could wear your Whitman Hansen Lanyard to Ducksbury or to Plymouth or whatever it is. But again, it's going to be, it's a vote, and it was really close the last time we had the vote, so we'll see how it goes tomorrow.
One of the things I was just going to comment on, on that, kind of with Mr. Scriven said on culture, it was weird in the building without, there's no, it's, the building's flat, and there's no Friday Night Lights, there's no, and hopefully, starting tomorrow, we might get a little bit more of student engagement, or if the opportunity comes that you can actually go see your friends' game, or even parents being able to see and participate, it can raise the culture right now, because we are experiencing real flat, especially in this building, because of the restrictions we've had to put into place to keep kids safe.
Yeah, obviously, Jeff, I'm biased, but I get to see other communities and other schools. And our culture at our school, in terms of athletic, in terms of the kids supporting each other, going to other games, you see the attendance at our games compared to other schools, and it's much larger than other schools. And, you know, we have a lot of things, a lot of fun things in Friday Night Lights. We have the couches, the superfan couches, we give the superfan cards, give all kinds of specials for the kids to be involved in, our captains go through leadership training so that they try to find ways to be more inclusive to the groups. So, but you're right, I mean, we definitely have a huge void right now, because it's, you know, the whole thing about if a tree falls in a forest, does it make a sound if nobody's there, right? And it's kind of like if the game happens and the stands aren't full, that the game really happened, and we're hoping that that changes at some point. Did you want to ask Chris?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bob. So next, I sent you a copy of the strategic plan that we worked on prior to February, prior to going out in COVID, and as a leadership team, we voted on this in June. What I'm bringing for the committee today is not necessarily to vote on the strategic plan, but for input from the committee, so that we can add things, run it by our leadership team. Our outcomes, we haven't been able to develop outcomes yet, we haven't really met and drilled down, but the hallmarks of success, George talked about Excel already, pre-K-12 system of teaching and learning, safe and secure environment, and then we added community engagement as a hallmark of success. These are things that I'd like the committee to look at, again, visionary, looking two to fi, or a three-year plan that we can have action steps, we know what we're working on, and over the course of the next three years, we can, we can report out to the school committee. So I'm looking for input that we can add so that we actually approve the strategic plan at an upcoming meeting, and I can align my goals to this, to this plan as well. So, input, and I know a couple folks have already mentioned a few things that we put on, on the board, but other things pertinent to the strategic plan, whether it be in the mission, the vision, the core values, the theory of action, or the hallmarks of success, we're really open to hearing what say you.
Do you think it would be a good idea to have us go over this and then talk about it next meeting, or do you want to do it tonight?
I know we sent it out, but I'll take input. We can revisit it next meeting as well, but as, if there, if people want to share right now, I'm willing to take that information now. We can share again a next meeting as well, but as we have it, if folks want to share, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'll go.
Thanks. Mr. Small?
In looking at how do we actually engage the community, you know, and I know you sent out a wonderful question here. The one thing I don't believe we utilize enough is the tax. You've got people working really hard, you know, and they do a tremendous job of fundraising, but they also, you know, meet on a regular basis and convey a message back to other parents. And I'm thinking that could be one way that we could perhaps hold smaller sessions, but to quote-unquote, get the word out there, so to speak. I can keep going, or we can stop?
Keep rolling, Fred. I think that's good.
You know, we, it appears sometimes we have individuals doing their own thing on social media, and I believe a consistent message coming from the superintendent is a wonderful thing. You know, Jeff, you're the face of the district, you know, for good, bad, or indifferent. You know, it's your face that they see. And that was a joke, by the way.
I'm laughing under my mask.
The video is a little bit behind, so it's sort of weird here watching it at the same time. But, you know, I think that the communications coming from the superintendent's office, you know, are a wonderful thing and one strong consistent message. Otherwise, you know, too many chefs can mess up the soup, so to speak. I believe perhaps in structured time within our meetings, you know, that we can have public forums, whether it be a Q&amp;A, and we, you know, select, you know, five random emails or messages if people have questions, you know, just, you know, have that. You know, when the world changes back, perhaps, we can get more to, you know, the coffee hours and, you know, hosting little things, you know, such as that. The express articles used to be a wonderful thing. I think that's another way to reach out for community involvement. You know, face-to-face conversations, I think are a wonderful thing as well. Any comments or feedback?
Good, good, Chris, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
So are we doing strategic plan feedback, or are we doing engagement?
Right now, we're strategic plan, but I think Fred jumped on engagement.
Okay, I jumped into the, the portion of developed communication flow chart between, I'm sorry, increased community relations.
Okay. I'm sorry, I skipped over David. David had a comment.
Oh, I was just going to add about the social media part. I actually attended a presentation by MASC, Tracy Novick, the field director, who also runs all of MASC social media. She did like an hour and a half presentation, and she strongly encourages all individual school committee members to use social media, because that's the best way to reach out in the community, and that is what MASC has said. And I think it would be in our best interest for our school committee members to stay engaged and continue reaching out and making sure information's out there. And I agree with Fred that absolutely Jeff should be reaching out. I think Jeff's done a great job of communication. I know recently we got a bunch of emails last two weeks or so, and I think they've been really informative, but I also want to stress that it's our job as a committee to make sure to be on top of everything, to reach out to our constituents, and to utilize technology, which would be social media, and it's encouraged by MASC.
While I agree it's our job to reach out, you know, to people, you know, there are, you know, vastly different things that can occur by a simple post, and it, you know, perhaps gets misinterpreted, et cetera. You know, so I don't know, maybe we have a screening process that the superintendent's office, you know, looks at everything, and, you know, if people want to post things and whatnot. And I'm not saying to stimmy the message, but I'm just saying so it's a one consistent message, you know, that's going out is the most innocent thing can get people in trouble. And it's, you know, we're all there to try and help, but, you know, some things, you know, can get lost in translation and whatnot.
Thanks, Fred. David?
I also want to reiterate that MASC did say that there's no, the administration can't oversee what we post and say, this is okay, this isn't okay, because that is a violation of the First Amendment. So there's no overseeing either by the chair or the superintendent, that's not actually legal. So I just want to keep that in mind. And to my knowledge, nobody here has posted anything that's resulted in anyone getting in trouble individually, so.
No, but I think, can I just add this? I just think that the MASC training, that as a new member, I also attended, the social media posting is informative and transparent and positive and unifying, and that's what we should be using our social media posting for, and I don't think we all are. And I agree with you, I don't think we should have to send everything to Jeff and George or Michelle and say, read this and do this.
I don't want that.
However, right, you've got to ask you. The purpose of having a social media page is not to arouse suspicion amongst our communities, and that's what's been happening, and that's not engaging anybody, it's making them all want to turn away and not trust any of us. So if we're going to have presence on social media, it needs to be unifying, and it needs to be positive, and it needs to be factual, and if people have questions and further questions, people have come to me with complaints, and I've said, reach out to your building principal, reach out to the superintendent. I'm not qualified to field those questions about the budget numbers. I'm not John Tuffy. I think that we need to do a better job with our presence on social media, as far as presenting the minutes from a meeting and the facts, and this is what they are, and we're all here for the same goal, and that's to give our kids a great education. That's what we're all here for, and that needs to come through. And I think all of these things that have been happening are not allowing that to come through. The first day of school, we didn't talk about school. We had a meeting about something else, and we didn't talk about school, and we should be ashamed of ourselves that we didn't talk about what school looked like. It was embarrassing. There are people who tuned into a school committee meeting, and no one asked Jeff or George how the day went, how did it go for the students? No one, and that's what we need to be doing.
Thank you. I'd just like to add to that, Hillary, you know, as a school committee member, when I have someone approach me about a particular issue, I do exactly that. I refer them to the building principal, because there's a, you know, we're kind of circumventing the process that we hire these people to engage in if we don't do that. So, you know, while it's important for us to, you know, take input from the community, absolutely, but I do think it's remember that, it's important to remember that we hire the superintendent, who then in turn hires building principals that have, you know, jurisdiction and a job to oversee their building. So, you know, I think it's, it's important to remember that, you know, if we want to be an effective organization, you know, for lack of a better term. Go ahead, David.
At the same time, we also need to understand what our roles are and what our responsibilities are. And one of my major issues, and I guess related to community engagement, is the roles and responsibilities of a chair. It's a 41-page document on MASC. One of the things they talk about is that when there's reorganization, usually there's an orientation for new members. So maybe going forward, we should have an orientation so new members are informed, we receive Robert's Rules of Order. MASC does a yearly workshop on it. We have a membership here, any workshop that we want, we can get for free, because we're already paying for it. There's five workshops I have right here that are very relevant to everything we're doing, district goals, strategic planning, governance operations, roles and responsibilities. So maybe in order to be more up to date with everything that's going on, there needs to be more transparency, we should get MASC involved to let us know what is our roles and responsibilities, because we have, you know, members who have been here a while, however many years. It's been apparent that the ways we've been doing things isn't necessarily the proper way, and that's not, everything we've been doing is wrong, but there's been a significant amount, especially surrounding the budget, and it's impacted our district, it's impacted It's impacted our, uh, public relations with our constituents. So we need to make sure we're doing everything we can do to be on the same page, whether it's having MASC, MASs, um, other things like that. Um, do you mind if I just read my community engagement papers? Are we on that or?
I'd like to get, hold off on that if you don't mind. Um, go ahead, Chris.
So I, I think I'm just gonna make a suggestion. So we're starting to go all over the map really fast.
Yep.
And we just had like three comments on social media that probably we should spend a little more time actually getting. If we want to engage, then we better be able to listen and all have a conversation, because if we just start all making quick points in an effort to get it out there, we're not going to accomplish anything, right? We're just gonna talk about a bunch of stuff, then we're gonna come back two weeks and be frustrated that no one listened to what I said or what Steve said, and we didn't do anything. So I think I would suggest that if we're, if we're gonna do engagement, we do engagement.
Yep.
If we're gonna do social media, we do social media. If we're gonna do the strategic plan, we do the strategic plan. But pick one, let's stay on it. Let's make sure everyone has an opportunity to stay on a specific point. And then I think we'll actually build some engagement here that will actually maybe lead to some of the action that we're all looking to seek. So that would be my suggestion. I, I just, I don't want to do the shotgun approach of, we're gonna go 100 different ways and not accomplish anything.
Sure. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, if I could ask that, if we sort of table the strategic plan right now, because we do have four pages there, we have like five pages here, and then if we sort of, Jeff gives his goals, they're all supposed to come under the umbrella of the strategic plan, then go out to the schools, then maybe we can get back to the engagement of the school committee and that page. So my suggestion would be maybe something like that.
So on that note, I was, I just wanted clarification, if this is something you're, is there anything blatant that we shouldn't be focusing in on? Because I agree with George. We put this out there. I'm looking for clarification as I write the goals, and, and we did tangent out, so I appreciate that pullback in. Looking at this plan, what our hallmarks are, is there something else we should be looking at? Or is this where we should be going?
So specifically to this strategic plan, two overarching broad comments. So one is, uh, and I didn't pick up on this until you sent it to us. I should, because it's on our plate literally six feet in front of me every meeting. Right? But when we talk about promoting student success, how do we define success, right? So I think that's, I have a feeling, I, I'm not saying we should do this now, but if we went around, we'd probably get eight different answers. So what does success mean, right? And so, I don't know how the hell you put that in this document, but it's certainly a conversation point, I think, of you and the administration and leadership kind of telling us what you think is success, because again, it gets this aligned. If you're thinking success is this, and I'm thinking success is this, you're gonna go this way, I'm gonna go that way.
Correct.
Uh, and then the only other thing, and, and, uh, I'm gonna tread very carefully with these comments, because I think this is, I want to support you and your team. In terms of the core values, I think potentially firming them up, firming them up a little bit more as this is what we will do. So less of the, we're gonna try or we, we believe, no, this is absolute. If it's a core value.
It's a will.
It's, it's, it's a core value, right? You believe it, you would run through the wall to do it. So as I look at some of these, I think there's a lot. I think perhaps maybe there was an, maybe there was an intent to be inclusive of the various stakeholders and services provided, but there may be an opportunity to kind of share more broadly in terms of, you know, this is what we're all gonna do, not, I'm gonna do this because I'm in this group or that because I'm that. And maybe less is more, right? Um, but that's, you can completely, I will have no problem if you.
So more like, we will, we will, instead of?
We will.
We will. Gotcha.
So not, for example.
That's not overstepping, that's.
Yeah, for example, um, there was a good one on here. Uh, where the hell is the language? It's right here in front of me. Oh, yeah. So for example, we are committed to provide a safe, secure, and healthy environment. No, we're not committed. We will provide a secure, safe, and healthy environment. Like it, it is, it's absolute. Like that's, that's what we're all gonna do. Um, and again, maybe, like if I look at some of those last couple, it seems like it was an attempt to be a little bit more inclusive. Those to me are more of, um, like the tactics are goals, not necessarily of value, so.
Sure.
That's.
Thank you. No, I think, thank you. I, I believe that to be true too. We, we will. I like that statement better. Other, other comments on strat plan?
Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don.
Thank you. Um, if, if we're digging into this on page two, um, 1.5, a little bit ago, Jeff, you said, you know, as far as our district, you said, you know, just what do we envision and leave the money piece out of it? So 1.5 does say, within the budgetary structure available. Look to establish school start times that are in best interest of students within the budgetary structure available. So of course, my, you know, opinion is, um, you know, we should be looking at simply the students' best interests, healthy start times, right? Sleep is important to all of us. We need to recognize that. We really need to start looking at the science behind that. You know, why are we having students get up and be alert in a class at 7:05 a.m. for high school? Um, and to do that and say, within the budgetary structure available, I, I don't agree with that. You know, we're making, we're putting finances ahead of students' health is really what that says, right? Well, we'd love to do this, but we can't. Well, you know, we, we need to consider.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Small.
Uh, if I could ask through you, despite the question. Uh, I know in the western power of the state, you have students getting on the bus as early as 5:30 a.m., I believe. Uh, how are they doing it? You know, and that's from Pete, that's, you know, through all breaks.
Well, I would have to get more information from you on what you're referring to, Mr. Small. I don't know what school you are referring to, but I'm considering our Whitman Hansen students and what I need to do that's best for our Whitman Hansen students.
Anybody else? Mike?
Well, we brought the kids in, um, last year and talked about this. I think we had, I don't remember, maybe six out of seven, all the kids were very happy with the start time, so they could keep working their jobs in the afternoon and this and that. I think maybe careful on how we worded that, because they, they all, I think all, but maybe one didn't speak or what, but, um, they all seem to be all for the start time the way it is, so.
I just comment on that. I, I mean, you know, I think it's important to, um, have as much empirical, you know, data and whatever we can for these issues, you know, and, and I, I'm, you know, I think a lot of times kids want to do things that maybe aren't in their best interest and, or they, they don't know isn't, you know, so I, I, you know, I agree that student input's important, but ultimately, I think it's, it's more responsible of us to rely on the science and what the experts recommend for our children.
I would like to respond to that meeting. That was five students, females, that were seniors, and I believe that meeting happened around January, so they were on their way out pre-COVID. I agree. I'd like to hear from more students. I'd like to hear from eighth graders who'll be coming up next year as a freshman. I'd like to hear from freshmen, sophomores. Um, I'd like to hear from parents' input. Maybe the parents do feel, you know, this suits us well in our family, in our household, in the bus schedules and so forth. Let's hear from more people. That's what I would like to accomplish this year and not, um, hearing from five students and who came into a school committee meeting, um, who had never been here before and were asked a direct question and answered it. Um, they did. But I'd like to hear from more of our community.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I just need to piggyback on that a little bit. Like I do think start times are really early, but I think that we also have to consider all of the things that kids do after school. So having a job is one thing. What time does the school day end? Like 1:40?
1:40. 7:05 to 1:40.
So they have time if they're gonna start their shift at 2 o'clock, and you have to also consider the socioeconomic, uh, status of our communities. We might very well have students who are working to help with their home finances. And I understand it might not be a, a big selection, but the other piece you have to think about it is sports too, right? Or kids who, um, to me, like kids who play sports, if you start, like when I used to coach high school, we would go to Dupesbury, and Dupesbury doesn't start till like 10 o'clock in the morning, I feel like. They start very, very late. Um, and we wouldn't, our games wouldn't start until after 4 o'clock, and then in the fall, come November 1st, you're trying to cram in a game in the dark, because not everybody gets the lights and, so while I agree that teenagers, as a high school teacher, I agree that teenagers need more sleep, and they do. I just think that if you put the start time later, they're still, they're just gonna stay up later. Like I, it's a, it's a vicious cycle that teenagers fall into. And I, I know I'm making general statements, and I know they don't, uh, you know, apply to every single student. But I do think getting a feel for things, but also looking at what other districts are doing. I mean, I think we have to look at what other districts in the Patriot League are doing. If we all have to align our sports and our debate teams and all of these other things with what other schools are doing, and they're waiting for us to get there, or we're waiting for them, you know, that's gonna throw off a whole lot of other things than a kid's sleep schedule.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a, a ton of factors that contribute to, to making a decision on this, and all should be considered, absolutely. Dan?
You can look at it also, that early start time, you're preparing from life. People go to work at 5:30 in the morning. These kids are gonna, you know, half these kids aren't, not everybody goes to college, and, you know, they're gonna be getting up early. It isn't really a health issue for those people. And like what Hillary was saying, you move it back to eight, they go to bed at 11. Move it back to nine, they go to bed at midnight. They just, like she says, they just, they're going for this six-hour sleep. And that's it. They're gonna complain no matter what time they have to go to school.
Good, Chris. So I, I, part of the plan is just an overall plan. So it's things I think we are gonna look at, and I don't really wanna, we're in the weeds again on a, on a certain topic, and I'd like to feel if there's anything blatant that you want me to look at and change. And then we will be looking at all that empirical data, asking questions. And this is over a three-year period, because I, I don't know, and I'll be very honest, I don't know what 21, 22 is gonna look like, because we haven't finished the September of 20 yet. So all of these things, this is just an overview of our focus areas as a committee and as a regional district to say, these are our plans, these are the things we're gonna look at. And some of these shifts will shift along the way. On May, March 13th, the district shifted totally. So, and the strategic plan was put to the side because we had to react. So I appreciate all the feedback. If there's anything blatant that you want me to change, or again, come to the next meeting and we can add, add to, and, and our team will be looking at those, uh, action steps and outcomes over the next couple of weeks, so we can add those to the, the, the strategic plan. So we can have a plan moving forward, and we can refer to that in our goals, with our principals, with our teachers, and, and with the superintendent.
And that was the.
That was the strat plan. We can move to engagement.
Yep. Okay. So we're gonna.
Because this has been engaging. So I know, I know, Chris, I, I know we've talked a little bit about engagement, and you put together that sheet, and I, I know some folks filled that out. Do you, do you want to lead the, the conversation on engagement? Do you want me to do that? Or we've talked a lot about it.
I, I think we can do it together. I guess, I'm looking for the committee. This is a, this is a group decision, but I think the thinking was with that document is if we kind of went with the questions of where we are, and then where we're going, and we kind of all participate with the questions, it gives everyone an opportunity to kind of go, opposed to just, this is where we're at today, and I think this is where we need to go. Well, we kind of, so is that okay if we just take it question at a time and kind of go around? If, if you want to pass, you pass, but does that work?
Sure, I think that would be good.
Okay. So I think the first question we had was, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right document. Yep. So how do you, how do you feel the engagement is between the district, including us, the school committee, and the citizens of Whitman and Hanson? And, you know, strong, weak, in the middle, and what do you think? And we'll just go around this way, and if you don't have anything, you can just pass.
You want me to just like give a one-word answer, or do you want me to?
I think whatever you think. I mean, how would you describe, how do you think the engagement is with the, with the community?
I mean, honestly, I, I think it's weak, and I'm gonna speak from, on the personal experience, my senior year, which was only two years ago. We had a huge group of seniors, uh, send out a district email to everyone in the school committee, all the teachers and staff, and we were trying to organize, um, a march over to Town Hall to help get an 8.5 assessment passed, because at that point, it was only 6.5, and, uh, we just, we didn't hear from anyone. We tried to get a student-led effort, and, uh, there wasn't anything. We were trying to learn, try to figure out the situation in ways we can advocate, and, and nobody really stepped up. We had parents step up to the plate, but nobody on the committee. So that's where I say from a student standpoint, um, from a parental standpoint, obviously, I'm not a parent, but from my campaign and just reaching out and speaking with everyone throughout that time period in the spring, it just seems there's a lot of, um, confusion, you know, I think it's fair to say that. And a lot of people are just trying to figure out what's going on with COVID, obviously, but a lot of people just don't know simple stuff like our, obviously like our budget process, or why are we advocating for this type of budget, or why do we need this? You know, why are, where are we doing well, and where can we, you know, for example, say there's an override that needs to pass. Well, why should this override pass? And that's what I think we need to be doing as a school committee, is interacting with our constituents and saying, you know, this is why we need this override, this is what we're trying to do with it, this is how we'll improve the community, this is what we do well right now, and this is what we need to work on. So, um, from that, I say from a committee standpoint, I don't think we do a great job, but yeah.
Mike, how do you think our overall engagement is?
I think, um, I would go with middle. Um, I think we can do better. I think we're doing a lot better than we were two years ago. Um, we'll leave it at that.
Great.
I, I think it can be better.
How is it, do you think, presently?
Um, I mean, I think part of the reason, kind of things what David said, part of the reason why I ran was because information wasn't really out there. Um, and, you know, as someone whose children are so young, and I wanted answers, and I wanted to know what was going on, um, it was hard to find that without just watching a full meeting. Um, so.
Great. Don?
I, I feel it's weak. A lot of room for improvement. Um, one example, um, would be, I don't recall any interaction with our senior centers and, and, you know, greater portion of our constituents.
Jeff, you want to fly?
No, I, I think, I think there's always room for improvement. Um, I, I, I need, and I'm gonna use the I statement, I, I need the committee to get words out. And if, and if you need to clarify, clarify with, with myself or with George or with John as we get information out. I think there was a, a real breakdown on social media, and we let members of the community run without this, this committee taking it, taking charge of that. So especially, and you had the perfect storm, when we weren't meeting together, we were meeting on Zoom. So, but that's what I found in, in the frustration from, from where I sat, was we were letting members of the community run the narrative without our own committee members stopping that narrative. Um, whether, and, and I don't want you to engage on social media, but engage with either a phone call or a conversation with that, with that person. And, and we can have that multiple, so I think that, that's the area we need.
Hang on, we're only on where we're at, not where we're going.
Oh, yeah, right. So that's, that's where I'm at. Sorry.
Okay, good, good. Chris?
Yeah, I think we're in the middle. Um, and I, I, I do, I, I think, uh, it's important for us to speak with a unified, uh, message. Um, because I think that, um, you know, is going to speak to our, I don't know, it, it'll certainly help with our credibility as a committee, um, and, and our effectiveness, you know, um, and, and the confidence that the, the public has in us, as, you know.
Good. Fred?
Uh, I rated us as weak. And essentially, we have too many, many individuals doing their own thing on social media. As I say, you know, setting a motion, creating confusion. Uh, open meeting law dictates that we, uh, can't really discuss positions, uh, but we do want to answer questions from people and make sure that there's factual information out there. Uh, I agree with Jeff that it's not worth getting into a, uh, skunk war on social media, going back and forth with people. Uh, you know, you call, make a phone call, state your case, talk to people one-on-one. I think it's far more effective than going back and forth, because you, no matter what, you can't win, uh, on social media with that, uh, with that type of going back and forth.
Okay, thank you, and good, because right now, we're just trying to paint the picture of where do we all think we are, so we can definitely spend more time on the, how do we deal with where we are. Dan?
Um, I, I would say we're like in the middle, maybe a little weak. One of the biggest complaints I always hear from everybody, um, the information on the website. Uh, I know we're starting to put that back together, but it really needs to be more information out there. People complain that things that used to be out there are now missing. Um, how budgets are, budgets, you know, our, our minute meetings, all that stuff. Once it approved, they should go out there or something for people to read. Um, you know, just, our information just isn't there anymore, they're saying. So that's a, you know, that's something we, we have to improve on. We have to get that information out there. Data's important to people.
Thank you. Steve?
It's below the middle. Uh, by the way, the tech just came in and fixed my microphone. I have to repeat everything I said in the meeting. We might be here till 10:00. Um, I'm sorry. It's, it's below the middle, and the way, the reason I say that is, you know, not everyone has, in, in both communities, I'll just take Whitman for now, the desire, the whereabouts, the time, the energy, you know, we talked about not only those families that they, we don't know what's going on in their personal life, they may not have that extra time to engage themselves and so forth. We could bring almost anything out, but there's gonna be people that just, they, they, they either don't want to know, they don't want to hear it, or that they just want to say something that's not necessarily positive in the end. I, I mean, I could expand on this going on and on. I grew up in a home that, you know, two parents. I was very fortunate. Never heard about divorce until, um, my aunt was. Never heard about divorce until, um, my aunt was divorced and, uh, things like that. And my cousins were spending more time with me and, you know, cause it's my mom stepping up to the plate for her sister. You, you just don't, in today's world, it, with people's lives are just so much more complicated. It's almost, you even told me tonight, you know, extremely busy day. I mean, you probably haven't seen your kids. You probably, you, you know, just saw your white belly this morning or whatever. And I'm not saying that's, that's bad for us all. We know how we have to move. We know how we have to keep going. But there just seems to be, yeah, we can improve upon a lot of things. And obviously I'm not saying what we, where we need to be. But it doesn't mean that everyone is going to show up to the game or want to be engaged or want to understand. Local elections, you know, it, how many, what percentage comes out on a, on a, uh, regular local election? It depends. I mean, it's, it's usually a smaller number and, and, you know, those are the people that are deciding for the whole town. Or people at whole town meetings. How many go to those? Chris even said it, our vice chair even said it in one meeting, you know, he, he, he knew me. Yes, he was growing up and, and that kind of inspired him, uh, with things. But not everyone gets that opportunity. And so it's just a very hard reach, but it's, that's really just kind of me saying, this, this is it. This is the raw data of, of what I have to say.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I had it as, so I think our overall engagement is weak with the, with the overall community as a whole. I think we have good relationships with our town officials, but we need better connections with the citizens at large. I think they should, the citizens should understand what we're doing and more importantly, why are we doing the things we're doing? Kind of what I had. So I'm going to keep going. This is so, okay so far?
Yeah.
Do we want to do like a two minute clock or we're okay? Everyone's okay so far? Okay. So, uh, next question was how effective do you think our school committee meetings are specifically? And building the engagement with the citizens of both towns? So actually we'll go backwards this way. Steve?
Well, I always like a very procedural meeting. I, I, I've run meetings before in the past. I, you know, currently president of the cemetery association in, at Colbrook and Whitman. And I, I, I mean, I, but I understand that there's got to be involvement of more than just, you know, there's stakeholders. Being in project management for work, you, you realize the importance of the stakeholders. And we have many. But yeah, I, 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 I think we're there, but I, I don't, I can't close a book and say we are. There's probably plenty of places for improvement and I'm sure in a few minutes, I'm going to hear plenty of that.
Dan, do you think the meetings are effective in building engagement?
Well, I'd say about medium. I mean, some people have different relationships with, um, you know, there might be only on one town or the other. I mean, I try to go to either, either side. I'll meet with any selectmen on either town because it's still a region.
Yeah, yeah. So let me reframe, let me make sure I'm getting to the essence of the question. So these meetings.
The, just the, our meetings. All right. I thought you meant with other.
Yeah, yeah. So the, our specific like this, in terms of building engagement, how effective do you think these meetings are? With building engagement with the community?
I think we have to get more information out to the people when they need it. It's, it's kind of like we, we have to start educating them much better. Cause we can see, you know, Jeff and everybody can put out the word for whatever, but sometimes it just falls on deaf ears and certain groups out there. And, you know, it must, might be up to us to have to like, you know, because we see how it always works. They take something and they twist it to their way. They're not saying anything wrong, but it's not accurate. You know, misleading. And that's where maybe we have to step in. I mean, I don't like going on social media for the same reason. You know, but maybe like the suggestion here, you, you call those people up and say, you know, stop the town fool. You're only hurting the towns at this point. It's like tell the truth and know the truth.
Okay. Thanks. Chris?
So I guess my answer to the question, as I understand it, is specific to these meetings.
We'll committee meetings.
I, I don't know what we do to encourage engagement more than just posting the meeting. And, and I, I'm just being honest. I, I might be missing things. But, uh, that's just my take, you know? And, um, I, I, that's it.
That's it? Just looking for everyone's take. Fred?
I believe we're somewhat effective, but I believe if we have structured time within our meetings, you know, can we answer questions that citizens would like to submit? You know, and foster perhaps a public, uh, you know, forum, you know, to get people more involved that way. And maybe it's, uh, you know, also we talked about getting the packs to, you know, bring forward messages.
So, but as it, so, so Fred, less, less on the what we need to do, but just today.
Yes.
It sounds like you said, you know, kind of effective. There's probably some other things we could do. Is that, do I got it?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Somewhat effective.
Got it. Jeff?
I, I think it's poor.
Okay.
And I think there are ways to improve, but if you want my overall, I don't think these meetings allow engagement of the community unless it's a hot topic. And we have people. I would like to see it better.
Okay. Don?
I think the meetings have not been effective either in building engagement. I have an idea on how to improve that, but we can go around and come back to that.
Yes. Don't, don't lose.
Okay.
Yeah, ineffective. There isn't any engagement.
Mike?
I'd go with weak.
Weak.
Ineffective.
Yeah, I would say ineffective or weak. Um, it's certainly been poor.
My notes were on a different. Yeah. So, I mean, I agree with what you guys said. We have limited perhaps, we have limited participants and perhaps it is even worse. It was even worse pre-COVID as we would only have a handful of people attend the meetings. So, um, I think this is, as a committee, we need to reassess. I think the key question, listening to all this is think of what the point of these meetings maybe were. So it was more of a governance and public requirement? I'm not sure that school committee meetings were really, I, I'm, I'm not sure if the genesis or the intent was truly to engage the community versus more of a requirement. So if we're saying, you know, we want to move from requirement to what it is, then we really need to think about how we do that. I think my general comment here is people aren't going to sit in a meeting for three hours. They're not going to sit in a Zoom for three hours. And it's not their problem to fix, it's ours. Because we need them. So, okay. So now we're moving from, okay. So I think to assess where some, we have a, a lot of opportunity for improvement, both in terms of our present engagement with the communities and both in terms of these meetings and what we're doing in terms of engagement. So, um, I think that was my individual belief, but I think I wanted to kind of hear from everyone in terms of where, where are we at? So it seems so far, we seem to all kind of be in the same ballpark. So that's good. So in terms of how we could better engage with the communities, so now we can get to ideas. Your top three, so I'm going to be more of a stickler than Jeff. Uh, three only, top three. If you have seven, top three. What are your top three ways that you think we could better engage the citizens of Whitman and Hanson? So David will, I should start in the middle, but I'm not even going to try and figure that out. So we'll just go this way.
Yeah. So, uh, my first would be the establishment of subcommittees, like a community relations subcommittee. Um, at Franklin Public Schools, their school committee has seven members, but they have 10 subcommittees. And their community relations subcommittee, their purpose is to review, propose and consider matters pertaining pertaining to communication with the community about school policies, issues and programs. Meet on a monthly basis throughout the community at various locations, including the Harvest Festival, the farmer's market, the senior center, the public library, Franklin Cable TV station, in order to share information and address citizens' concerns. So I think we could implement it as we could see WHCA. We could be going to our senior center and obviously with COVID it's a little bit different, but I'm saying in our long term. And we could be going out to Hobart Pond or going to Camp Kawani, things like that in our community. I think that would be a great opportunity to reach out, let people know what's going on and keep them up to date. Another idea I had.
Hold on. We're going to try something a little differently. This may, this may blow up, but let's try it. So let's try and see if we can have some dialogue. So on that point, anyone have any thoughts as to what David just said? Make sense? Love it? Hate it? What do you think? Anyone?
Questions?
Questions? Clarifying questions?
No.
I would almost say, you know, we, we always come to the school library and when we first built this school, we were in the theater upstairs. Why don't we move around? And I think this was brought up years ago. Why don't we even move around our meetings to different buildings? I know, you know, now I'm probably going to give a level of confusion because everyone came to the high school and they thought that, that's where it was happening and it is and so forth. But I don't know. I, I just kind of see that as, as kind of tandeming off of what, uh, David had to say.
Sure. Anyone else?
Chris? Key, I don't think we could really move around like we would have before. We are now in where everything's recorded, live broadcasting. You move around, you're not going to have the live broadcast anymore. You might not even have the recordings we have. Cause it's, we don't have the facilities in every school. Cause we used to talk about going, holding a meeting, moving the meeting around to every school. That way there you're engaging in every school system, you know, within the school. But now you're set up like that and people are expecting to, to be able to view the meeting live and things.
Yeah.
I think there's some confusion. I'm not suggesting we go to different schools to have our meetings. I'm suggesting that with our community relations subcommittee, the chair of that subcommittee, would appoint people, say, hey, uh, you two members, you guys want to go to the Hanson or Whitman Public Library and talk about said discussion? And it's approved, and it's a discussion that the subcommittee approves on. Well, you can bring it to the full committee to approve on it. And then the community relations can go speak on it. So we're not meeting in person. We're not having anything that would violate open meeting law or anything like that. It would just be to go out into, uh, the farmer's market or go to the senior center, go to the public library. Maybe WHCA, we can work with them and come up with something, um, that would be helpful. Like for example, even with WHCA, I added a portion regarding public comment. And that was the second thing I was going to get into. It's during COVID, as we all know, there's nobody else here, it's just us. And a lot of people in the community have reached out to me and said that they've sent emails out, but they haven't been read during meetings or anything like that. And I know public comment hasn't necessarily been on the agenda, but it's been frustrating, uh, to parents to not have their concerns heard. So I'm recommending that we could even do like a Zoom wait, uh, waiting room or do some sort of waiting room and use the Promethean board right there. And when someone wants to speak during public comment, it'll pop up. They can say whatever they want. If it's something inappropriate or we need to remove them quickly, whoever's in charge of tech, whether it's someone from WHCA or, or Michelle or whoever can do it, we can mute them, remove them, go to the next person. And then we can also time how long public comment is because, um, in policy subcommittee on Monday, we, um, have recommended a new policy for public comment that will go to the full committee, I think, next meeting. So we can look at that more. And I think if that policy gets approved, I think we can start talking about what does that look like during COVID? And what does that look like after COVID? And my final recommendation would be that we get liaisons. Actually, uh, full credit to, uh, to Marshall Otina for this idea. He recommended PTO liaisons. I think it's an incredible idea. I think we should have school committee, uh, members go to DeValle PTO meetings or, you know, Hanson Middle PTO meetings or, you know, elementary levels. And we can, um, appoint a liaison either to each school or to each school level, like elementary, middle or high school. And then another idea I had for liaisons was a student advisory liaison. We could have the student advisory council meet with the school committee and we could create that network where students feel they can talk with school officials and get their concerns heard. Cause I know, uh, here, there really isn't like a strong network like that. I know Jeff is only one person and, you know, you can't expect the student to send like five emails out and CC Michelle. And hopefully Jeff has the, the time to get back to them. So at least in this regard, you could have students go, all right, well, I'll go attend student government. And I know school committee members are going to be there. I can ask questions and we can kind of create that dialogue. And there's that, um, you know, that understanding. And I think that would be great for us as a committee. But yeah.
Thank you. Mike, you have any ideas?
Yeah. A couple, uh, David and I kind of drive together like a, maybe pop up meetings, like you were saying. Like today, two members are going to meet at Lake Camp Kawani or coffee shop with Jeff. Like obviously have a timeframe. Agree, maybe appoint a social media head for us that maybe we could call and say, hey, I don't know how you, that's not my forte at all. So, um, I don't know how you would go about that, but.
Okay.
Talking to some people over the weekend, could, is there a way to make the meetings a little bit shorter, a little more efficient? Three hours is, is, is too long. That's what I have. I, a couple of things, David, just to go back to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chris, Chris and I have gone to PTO meetings in, in Hanson. We, we have gone. Some of the people that are popping up now are very good, that are popping up and posting things. And maybe bringing them in here might be a little more efficient than us going there.
Right. Well, and even right now, I guess I was kind of caught up in not the idea of going to like a different school. Cause in my head, I'm thinking Zoom right now. And that's a great point you bring, Mike, is, is that maybe we should try to get these people here. But if we have the opportunity, like I don't expect everyone to attend every meeting for every PTO. And I get that, you know, everyone has their own lives. But, um, obviously we can try to get PTO presidents here, PTO members here, and I totally am on board with that. But, um, at the same time during, right now during COVID, if anyone has opportunities, say, hey, I have an hour, hour and a half, you know, maybe I'll do a Zoom and be able to, uh, click on the link and join, uh, their meeting. And if they have any questions that I can answer, you know, obviously if I can't, I'll direct to someone else. Or, but to even just be there, be present and have someone there attending the meetings. And, um, obviously again, when we go back to in person for PTO meetings, that might be a little complicated with transportation. But even to just appoint people, so like, hey, maybe the PTO president of, of DeValle goes, hey, you know, you're a liaison, I just want to update you on this or something like that. I don't know. Um, just an idea to create that, you know, transparency. And, um, you know, I want to thank you for mentioning that you and Chris went out to Hanson PTO meetings. And I think it's a great idea. I just, I think it really gets people involved and it lets us, or it lets them know that we are involved. You know, we don't just sit here and then go home and do nothing. You know, we care about our schools, we care about our students and we put our students first. And we put their kids first. So, yeah.
Good. Hillary?
I think like Q and A's, I mean, obviously COVID, um, like more formal Q and A's. I, I, I'm, I'm nervous to say like, sure, I'll be on a Zoom at this time to answer any question you have. I'm not like, we, we don't, that's, I don't think anybody should be doing that necessarily. But like a more formal, pointed, we're going to talk about the transition to full in-person learning. So we will be there with you to take questions you have. And maybe then we can put them in some sort of document and then present them at a meeting. Something a little more organized. I do feel like there are a lot of questions. I think the public comment part of a meeting needs to happen. We don't have, there's, there's, I think any of the meetings that I've been to since I've been on the board have not, have not had any public comments. And that's concerning because those of us who are on social media kind of get the brunt of it when, you know, and my thing is to, as I said earlier, to deflect and say, you know, go to this person, go to that person, um, for that. I think being out and about, and I don't know what that would actually look like. I know, you know, like I coach my daughter's soccer team, so I'm involved in the community. You know, being involved in the community, not just being someone on the school board who just shows up for these meetings. And that's that. I think that being visible is important also. visible is important also, to show that you're not just, I don't know, I think sometimes people might have certain motives for being on boards. And I think if we're out in the community, it might, it looks like we care about the community as a whole, because that's what the education system is, right? It involves the community, students who graduated, students who are just up and coming, things like that. And then, you know, I really like your point of appointing a point person for social media. I think that for good or for bad, people get their information on social media. And if that's what we're going to do, as I said earlier, it needs to be for good, and it needs to be unifying. And if we decide as a committee that we want to make like a Whitman Hanson School Committee page, and have someone run it, and like a PR person, who gets out the meeting minutes, who, you know, maybe puts a document together of what are things you want to hear at this meeting discussed? To, you know, do you have any agenda items? I mean, I don't really know how that works with the community. But just things like that, where I think the community would say, like, I want to hear about this, could you talk about this? And I also think that three-hour meetings are too much, and people are not going to come and do that. So.
Great. Thank you. Dawn?
Sure. So two-prong here, because the last question was, how effective are our engagement here at the meeting? So my comment to follow up on that, specifically in the meeting, for those who do want to sit through a three-hour meeting, or come, is really to utilize this tech board. And by doing that, I think it's important to share the information that we have in our hand, right? I believe, once we get our packet, that's public document. If we're looking at it in a meeting, I'd have to clarify that. But I would like, as best as possible, if we're looking at something, I would like the community to be able to have that, too. I think that's how we can build engagement, for those who want to watch a meeting, and be involved to that extent. For those folks who don't watch a meeting, but we would like to get our message out to them, aside from social media, which is number one right now, is still the newspaper. So I'd like to see, and I did email, as an FYI, to the committee, a few other school districts that have an annual report, which is quite extensive, over 20 pages, and I'm not looking or suggesting that this year. But for starters, maybe a one-page newsletter. And I don't know what that would contain, but we could do an insert in the Whitman Hanson Express, maybe in the spring, pre-budget, or maybe around budget, or also at next year, opening of schools. So an insert, as opposed to an article in the newspaper, because then we can make it a PDF, attach it to the website, it can be shared, it can be there, as an informational, who we are. And then utilizing WHCA to TV, and whether we run, you know, informational shows, or 10 minutes on each of us, who we are, a little, you know, a bio, if you will, because there are residents who are at home watching cable TV. So trying to reach those constituents. I'll make a comment regarding Facebook. Also, I had about conversation, PTOs and PACs. I think it's a two-way conversation, right? So we could attend that meeting to be ears and listen. What do they have to tell us that they may want us to bring back to the committee to share? And perhaps we have something to share, communication-wise, with them, about what we're doing, what our ideas are for the district. Social media, I certainly have a presence on social media with my own page, and I do my best to present facts and information. And like you commented, Hillary, when you couldn't find information about the school district. So that's really what my intent is, to share information. I think it's been helpful also, Jeff, by this year, a lot of documents being added to our website, because I've been able to point people right back to that. Here's the document, here's the document. And that's really been the directive that I've learned from MASC, too, you know. Yes, people are going to be out on social media, and they're going to have their own opinions. But we can state the facts. And it's best if you can point them right back to a district document, and then turn off those comments and notifications, and just leave it there. You know?
So again, I think it's top three, we, maybe the next item, we'll just skip ahead to, after we all go through top three, we can probably just have a conversation on some.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Seems like we all come back to that. But, yeah, and I'm watching.
Three hours, right, guys?
Well, I, I know. This one is, this one is really, this is really intended for us. Certainly, it's available to the public, they can launch. But this is, you know, how can we do better?
I agree.
Jeff, what do you think?
I really think the public comment piece, looking at different other school committees and how they function, it doesn't mean that it's open public comment the entire meeting. It gives an opportunity for public comment. People sometimes even sign in as guests, and the chair recognizes that guest, and they bring up a point, maybe not for discussion at that specific meeting, but a point for us to then research, or bring back as another agenda item. Because I don't also want us to engage in a comment without any information as a gotcha sometimes. So people sign in, and they, I think that would be an opportunity for members, not just to email a certain school committee member, and then drop it at a school committee meeting for us to decide or communicate. But if they want to attend, and we can set that up, if it's, if it's, we're still in COVID world, how that happens. And then we can recognize that person, either by phone, or whatever, dial them in. But public comment, I think, is essential. And I've, we've only had that when it's been hot button. And we get a lot of, it helps the committee make informed decisions when people are out there. I also think liaisons to, to me, if we're out and about in the committee, in the community, I don't want to be the only person out there representing the district. And if we have more interactions with the PAC, I'd like, if I attend, I would like to bring somebody along with them. And a PR person, that doesn't hurt. So it's not always coming out of our office. Because I do, I am mindful that we are short-staffed. We have cut administratively, and I just want to bring that out there. Adding, adding more stuff to our plate, I have Michelle, that's it. George has Lori, that's it. And we don't have a PR person necessarily. We do have a firm, that if you want to blast something out there. And on Dawn's point about the express, feel free, we do have a spot in the express as a district. If school committee members want to write an article, I'll forego mine, and you guys can write. Michelle actually had the idea, she says, how many months in a year? How many school committee members are there? Pick one a month. I'm more than happy to share that with folks. Our administrators are more than happy to share that article space. If you want to bring it out, if you want to introduce yourself, and that's another medium that we can use.
Awesome. Thank you. Press?
So, I guess, I really like the idea of having a subcommittee that is specifically charged with promoting engagement. And I, I think it is important to have the community feel as though these meetings are accessible, and they're welcome here, and whatnot. But I, I think it would be a good idea to encourage parents to participate in their own school, and engage more with their own building principals, and administrations, and teachers. And, because I think there's something to be said for the more engaged a parent is directly with their child's education, the better chance for success, right? So I guess, just some of the things I was kind of thinking of is, is having members of our subcommittee, you know, be involved in WHCA, maybe sporting events, we attend local youth events, or high school, with the idea in mind that we're prepared, you know, with a certain, you know, bullet points or things, and then maybe, you know, just in general discussion, it kind of very informal. But then I was thinking of like, you know, parent-teacher conferences, right? When you have these people coming in. Maybe we have a couple at each building, and we get a chance to engage with parents then. While, all the while, trying to encourage them to engage more with their building. I think, I think that's sometimes where we go awry, is we think we want to field all these things, and channel them, funnel them through the school committee to the administration. And I think that's putting the cart before the horse sometimes. And then I was also thinking of events like the Kwangmi Basket Auction, right? Because, you know, I think, you know, we obviously have some very dedicated parents who have been, and will continue to be involved in the PACs, and the PTOs, or whatever. But I do think there's a significant segment of the population, whether they're young parents, or they're single parents, or whatever, that they don't maybe have the confidence, or whatnot, to engage in discussions that affect their child. But I, you know, that would be my objective, to try to get those people that aren't, you know, likely to, you know, engage.
Great. So clarifying question for you. When you talk about the subcommittee, are you looking the subcommittee as someone that would help organize things across the entire committee? Or are you, because what I'm trying to figure out is, so in your view, right, how much of this engagement responsibility resides with the few versus?
No, I think we all should engage it. I just think the subcommittee might facilitate.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. Fred?
And sorry if some of these items are regurgitated, but I guess it's the one in the middle. A liaison, as I said before, to the PACs, that can report out their activities at our meetings. I also think that we need to be cognizant and careful of stepping on the PAC toes. Chris, I agree with you 1,000% that the more involvement a parent, the more involved a parent can be within their own local community school, the better off we all are. And if they're involved with the PAC, per se, and then the PAC funnels, you know, to give us an idea of what they're working on, and what they're doing, and perhaps any issues that they see, we also have to be cognizant of what our charge is. Budget, policy, and Heimerfire superintendent. You know, so we want to keep in our proper lane at the same time. But I think that being a cheerleader, so to speak, and getting messages out, and taking back input, is a very, very important thing for us to be doing. Administrative coffee hours, when the opportunity can present itself once again, you know, and presentations, along with the presentations to the communities and the PACs. Q and A within our meetings, and perhaps a couple forum, get people involved, have them asking questions, let's answer their questions. And also, I think that within our website, it is large, it is vast, it is confusing, and there is information lacking at times. But a very simple portal, that if someone does have a question or a concern, you know, that they can go in, they can type it in, hit enter, and it will get to somebody that can answer that question for them. And I don't mean to pass it off on to administration and make Jeff's job more difficult. But, you know, that might be the more appropriate place, you know, depending upon what the question is. Or that person gets it, and then refers it to the proper building principal, you know, et cetera. You know, and then thanks the person for their question, you know, it can be a, you know, quick two-line email. You know, thank you, your information has been forwarded to XYZ, you know, you should expect an answer of, you know, within 24 hours, something reasonable. And then go from there. And then whatever we promise for an answer, we over-deliver. So if we stay 24 hours, we have a commitment to do it within 12.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Dan?
Like I was saying before, and people have already touched, the town hall meetings, at the different venues, going out there, getting information that way, you know, it's just not the PACs and things. Just kind of like, you know, people are saying the coffee shops, all that, you know. I think that's, everybody's pretty much pointing out that. I think that's a key thing. We really have to get the input. And the next thing would be the same comments here. Jeff hit most of my thing. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting, with the knowledge that there's no action taken at this meeting, but could be put on a future agenda item down the line, and keep it to like 15 minutes, 15-minute-long maximum. Because like everybody's saying, these meetings are already way past what they should be. You know, we should be able to streamline these, be more efficient.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Steve?
I think, being right back in our schools, whether it's going with the superintendent, and assistant superintendent, walking through the schools, it gives not only the teachers, students around, an idea of who we are, better idea, but even not just doing that while the school day's going on, also doing that when, I think someone mentioned it, those special occasions of teacher conferences, although I know those are more probably on, they're all on a one-to-one basis. I remember the openings of schools, you know, the traditional way, where the night before, and I've been at some of those in the past, just so that when that child goes home, Mr. Boyce was in our, was in our class on a Friday afternoon volunteering. Well, it doesn't have to be a volunteer every single week type of thing. But just be able to get in into the schools. And I think that's where we're sometimes maybe not seen or noticed. Even though children probably don't know it, but the parents, you know, they, they know who we are, but they probably just need to know who we are, in a sense. And as a side, I got my own little fan club, it seems, right before school started on Beal Avenue, of a few kids coming by. One young man on a bike, he goes to high school somewhere, he's a few houses up. Aren't you someone important in town? And it kind of grabbed me the other day. Or, you know, the other, three other kids coming, walking down the street, they're getting all excited for school. And of course, my thing's always to share, you know, just, it's a different type of school year, you know, I'm not trying to be their parent or something, but having the honor of being an uncle, you know, and by the way, I'm a great uncle for a second time. That's a little guy, nine days old. You know, it just gives you that chance to, and I always make sure their parents know me, but it gives you that chance to just say, just say a few things, you know. You're human, and they're human, and they're going to be you someday. I just think those things are important. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in line with all of you folks so far. I think the two items I had were definitely around public dialogue and comment. I think the only thing where I'm different is, I don't think we can have someone tell us something that we don't want to hear, and shut it down because we don't like what they're saying. So I do think I would encourage us to be a little bit more courageous with the public comment, of just bring people into the meeting. Because, you know what, you know, now maybe we have to say, hey, we'll get back to you, or maybe we have to redirect. I know that's going to happen, Jeff. But we're going to get into it in a second, I'm sure. If someone has something to say, and we don't give them the venue, I don't think we should be foolish enough to think they're not going to find another venue to say. So we're going to hear some things. We might not like it, it might not make us feel great, but we might as well take our medicine, deal with it head-on, listen, respond. So I definitely think the, bringing the public, whether it's a Zoom, 15 minutes, something, something that we can agree on, to me, is critical. And then I think what all of you said in terms of outreach, we have to find a way to get to the people. People aren't going to come to us, we need to go to the people. So awesome ideas, I'm not going to regurgitate what everyone already said. So we don't lose engagement here. I think it started to get a little bit later. So I was thinking, maybe we can do two things. So one, I think we need to talk about social media, because I feel like everyone's dying to talk about social media. So we should probably spend a little bit of time on that. And then what I would suggest is, can we come to an agreement with one, two, no more than three things that we're going to do? So we can take the easy way out, and say, we'll just look at our notes and talk about it next meeting, or the meeting after, and maybe in three months, we'll do something. Or, before we leave tonight, we can say, here's one thing we're going to do. So, does that sound reasonably okay? So social, social media, I mean, we can just open it up. I mean, I think some people have already shared some thoughts. Any new thoughts in terms of, should we, I guess what I've heard so far, to try and recap, and I tried to listen as best as I could here, so no disrespect if I missed anything, I heard people want to share, people want to put information out, they want transparency. I heard centralization in terms of, you know, making sure that that message is consistent. People are going to use it. I heard it's tough. People are going to use it the wrong way. What else? What else do folks have to add when it comes to social media? Dawn?
Just want to follow up. Hillary, you mentioned about a school committee page, sort of like a central, or?
I think I piggybacked on.
Okay. Was that the message I just, like?
No, more, I was saying more like a liaison, like someone that would be in charge of that, that we could appoint out of this to maybe run, yes, a page, yes.
Oh, okay. Then, yeah, the notion of a Whitman Hanson School Committee Facebook page, I believe, is highly discouraged among MASC.
MASC says you can't do it.
Yes, can't do it. So I just wanted to.
It's the school, it's the school side has to.
Right. Because even if you're putting a document out there, if it starts any type
The guest is representative of all of us.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, you'd have to shut comments off, because you can't start commenting on it. Okay, so I just want to mention that. One-person liaison, I certainly wouldn't want to sign up for that. And I don't know that that would be wise. You know, because, oh, one person shouldn't bear that burden. Actually, I'll speak for myself, that back during budget season, I did post on a Hanson page, and I was then removed from that page. Fair enough, they're allowed to do that. But it was, my message was, you know, quieted there. So I respect that. But it's a fact that I couldn't, so I can't do that. Right? So, just, I think, I looked up on my phone, forgive me. We actually do have a policy. KA says school community relations goals. So KA, it's on our district policy. The one part I'll just read, and it is relevant to social media, I believe, because it says, effective, accurate, and meaningful communications that facilitate dialogue, and encourage involvement in district programs, and create community advocacy for its public schools. Right. I think, yeah, I never want to engage in any argumentative, or controversial, or never speak on behalf of the committee on social media, just getting out effective information.
And I can tell you, Dawn does give out effective information. The visitor page, I just know. I mean, I know, you know, Dawn, you're in my stream, and it's usually just Facebook. But it's great. You know, you pulled up some things for us that are very helpful, to not necessarily us. us, but out there. You know, you've gotten out those words, and it was that factual, great stuff. It was very straightforward. And I said it last year, Dawn was my teacher for a little while, I learned quite a few lessons, I appreciated it, I don't know what the enrollment fee for this year would be, I'd sign up for another course with you. But, you know, what I'm saying basically is, she's done a really good job of just being that factual type of person. Now, certainly not nominating you for this at all, but, you know, you get good information out there, very straightforward. So thank you for that.
So let me kind of, so one thing with social media that I always struggle with is the timing of this. So my challenge with social media is you need to, so depending on what you post, if you post something and someone responds, sometimes with misinformation, which I think is common, you need to be prepared to immediately respond, because if you don't, you can just see the spider web of god knows what happens, happens. So personally, that's a challenge for me, because I just can't be on social media all the time looking at, I want to put something out there, you know, I say, hey, this is something that we're doing, you know, Mike, Citizen Mike over here says, oh, that's crazy, whatever, can't believe they're doing that. You know, eight hours later, all of you have caught on, it's a problem. So the timing for me becomes a huge issue. But maybe that's depending on what you're posting and where you're posting it as well, right? So I guess, is there any, and this might have to take a separate meeting or discussion, is there a clear role that we think social media should play? Is it a, go ahead first.
I'm an admitted dinosaur when it comes to social media. I don't engage in it hardly ever. And so I couldn't, I don't pretend to be, you know, insightful, you know, with my comments on it. I'm just, from my perspective, it presents more challenges than are beneficial in my mind, right? And especially with a group like this, where we are bound by, you know, certain, you know, agencies or whatever that oversee.
Laws and restrictions.
Yeah, whatever. And so I just think it might do us well to come to some type of consensus on how we'll engage, you know, and I don't really know. I'm just trying to think of like, I think it's important for us to speak with one voice as a committee and not have, you know, the offshoots. So I don't know what that looks like exactly, but that's my concern, and I don't really have a solution to that, it's just an issue that I see.
I just, I will tell you, so I quit social media this summer, because I just couldn't.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Hillary?
I said I quit social media this summer. I am done. Except that I have a Facebook page for school committee, for a social media member, and you can have that. The feedback that I get from people in Hanson and Whitman is that it's positive, they like it, because, as I said earlier, you know, for good or for bad, that is where people go to get the information. To your point, you're totally right. You know, in the summer, if someone was commenting, I could be like, sure, great, now, but now my phone's in my desk somewhere, and if someone comments, I don't see it for six hours, seven hours, whatever, so that is problematic. So what I have tried to do, and I think to your point of coming to a consensus, I don't post opinions. I don't post anything that someone can put an opinion into or read into. It's, so usually what I do after meetings is I post a table of contents of from this minute to this minute, this is what we discussed, and this, you know, because people aren't going to, they're not, I mean, how long have we been in here, two and a half hours? So if someone wants to hear about the sports, they can go right to minute 15 and click on that and watch the three minutes. I think that if we take that kind of approach, and then during the budget in the summer, you know, my approach was providing facts, so I shared a statistic we talked about earlier about the budgets that we spend per, like, professional development for teachers, for materials for teachers, all documents from DESI, so nothing that, even though people like to take things like that and say that they're wrong, you know, nothing that can be interpreted as opinion or adding, of course, people have opinions, but I think that that's what we need to be cautious of on social media, because that's going to create a dismembered message from us, if you will. So I don't know that all of us need to be on social media, I don't think that, I don't think that people who aren't part of it should be forced to be on it for this purpose. I don't think that's going to help engage anybody either. I just think that those of us who are on it need to be unified in the message that we're providing and make sure that we're just providing information to people, like factual information, not things that are our opinion or accusations and things along those natures.
So for those of, so for those of us that are on this committee that are active on social media, are you posting on your page or in your feed, or are you proactively posting on the other page?
I just have a page that people follow, yeah.
Who else has?
Just Dawn, my page.
I got a page.
So are you posting, for example, like on Whitman Pride or Hanson Network? Would you post something there, or you just post it on your?
So what I like to do is I'll post something on my own page, it'll be on my page's news feed, and then what I might do is I'll use the account to share it to other pages, but I'm not individually posting on each page. Like, for example, say, it was strongly encouraged by MASC, I reached out to them in advance about this to post recaps. They want you to post recaps to what happened in meetings. It doesn't necessarily have to be after the minutes are approved, they can be done prior. So I've been doing recaps, and a lot of parents have reached out to me and said they appreciate it. So what I do is I'll post a recap on my page, I'll share it onto my personal page, so people who are friends with me can see it on there, I'll share it onto Whitman Pride, Hanson Network, other town pages, and then it's out there and people interact with it. And usually, you know, I get a lot of good remarks, obviously there's some negativity, but like everyone else has said, you know, just deflect it to the appropriate sources, so.
Okay. Dawn, same? Are you just posting on your page?
Right, right, not really sharing it anyway, I just.
But if we, but I think you and I have PTO presidents, so oftentimes, like, the Indian Head PTO President will share my posts to the Indian Head PTO page of what had happened, and I'm sure that happens with Conley and Duval too.
So an idea here, do you think it would be possible for those of you that are on social media to almost develop a best practice of what's worked well, and then potentially share that with those that may be comfortable doing it, so that we're all kind of, I'm not trying to, again, I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not trying to be restrictive, like this, like a best practice, like this is a guideline, not a policy, but more of a, this is what we've done and it's worked well. And because it sounds like with some of you, you know, if you're doing a recap and you're doing a chronology, then like, why can't, you know, you share her chronology and she share your recap, like, if it's factual information.
Right.
I mean, I guess we may have to, part of this may have to be, you guys have to legally make sure we're not going to run afoul of open meeting law.
Well, and then we would have to work on communication to us as a committee between one member to another and make sure we're on the same page, to say, oh, you know, like, for example, like Hillary, Dawn, if they post this, and I go, oh, that's great, do you mind if I share it? And they go, yeah, no problem, and then I post something, and maybe they have a question, go, well, David, in your recap, you said this, are you sure? And then I go, well, yeah, I rewatched a video, I can point you to this minutes, and it's a quote. And they go, okay, just want to make sure, and they can share it. I know somebody reached out to me, I posted something like two weeks ago, and they just were like, asking a quick question, make sure, oh, does this violate open meeting law? And I, you know, showed them that I didn't, and I explained to them, I showed them a piece on the agenda, and we moved forward, and that was that. But yeah, so I think it's a simple communication, whether it's between members to each other, the administration. I'm open to creating a document that I'll share with the whole entire committee and the administration on ways I think social media has worked, ways we can improve on it, ways that it hasn't worked. I don't mind doing that, and I don't mind talking with Hillary or Dawn, who also use social media, and then kind of get ideas from them and get their views on pros and cons. I don't mind speaking with anyone about it, but yeah.
So I would defer to the vice chair and the superintendent of, maybe there's, because I think that's where we just need to make sure we're on the same page, right? I think the intent sounds like it's really good, people are trying to share and help, but making sure that there's some clarity around, you know, for example, I think, depending on where we go with some of the, so this is maybe a start, right? Depending on where we go with some of the website and technology stuff, if the district decides to put something on the website, it's probably really easy to redirect and share that through the individual pages. Now, I hear your point too, Jeff, about, well, who's doing that? So maybe there's a longer-term discussion about the role that technology plays in our communication and engagement, or maybe the start is, if you three are willing, maybe sharing some best practices to what works.
Funny, I don't usually post after a meeting, I'm kind of exhausted and I just move on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, it might be, you might, I don't know.
Right, but I think what David does, a recap, is perfectly acceptable, because he's stating what's gone on through the meeting. I enjoy what Hillary does, because you're pointing out the timeframes. So I don't know that there's a right or a wrong, or that, you know, we should be.
No, but first, right, so.
Chris, can I?
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
You know, one concern I would have about posting an in-depth recap would be, you know, we vote minutes, and prior to that, they draft minutes. And if we're giving, you know, a complete recap, which quite frankly, I've written there, at times more in-depth than our minutes, our minutes are a general representation of the meeting, not verbatim, and David must spend hours, because it's almost verbatim of what our meeting was. But yet the committee hasn't voted on, you know, perhaps maybe a disclaimer, you know, upfront saying, you know, these are the topics, this is what was said in the meeting, as I recall. You know, minutes will be posted on our website after they're approved or something of that nature.
So Fred, I think the whole spirit of this conversation is trying to get us to a place where we all kind of understand what's happening and we're all hopefully sharing.
Can I just reiterate one thing, too?
Yeah.
So Fred, I just want to reiterate that I spoke with Tracy Novick from MASC, and had spoke about the recap and asked if it was appropriate, and I made sure to ask if it was appropriate to post a recap prior to minutes being approved. And Tracy Novick, who runs social media, runs the MASC social media, she's on the school committee in Worcester, she said, yes, it's strongly encouraged.
I don't agree with you.
Right, and again, so before minutes are approved, it's all right, and it's strongly encouraged by MASC. So I just want to reiterate that.
Did you, so, just to interject here, your recaps are very thorough, that, like, they are pages long, which would be one of my suggestions, would be like, a recap to me is a paragraph, right? If I'm asking my students to recap a book, I'm not looking for three pages of something, and I think that's maybe where Mr. Small's getting with it, because they are very, very detailed, to the point where, I mean, did you show her your recaps, or did you say, I'm just doing a recap?
Well, I explained to her, I did, I did talk about, I gave examples, I quoted it, yeah.
So how about this?
David, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just trying to say that perhaps the rules.
Fred, hang on. Fred, hang on. Fred.
Hold on, Fred.
Hang on, Fred. So I think, again, everyone should be comfortable with what, A, their individual opportunity and rights are, and hopefully, in the spirit of all working together, we all can come to some level of consensus in terms of what's best for the committee as a whole. So what I would suggest is, we probably need a separate discussion around social media and technology. I think it would probably be helpful to almost have a best practice, because if we come up with a best practice, and if you guys talk and you find, maybe there's a slightly different way or a better way, because I think your intent of what you're trying to do is clear, you're trying to provide information, I don't think anyone has an issue with that, great. There's a way to get there.
Right, and I just want to add, the reason why they are so thorough, as many people have mentioned already, is that our meetings are three hours long, so people don't want to tune into a meeting and a table of contents. I think it's a great idea, but sometimes, you know, if you're skipping ahead and you're like, oh, well, is this one, the superintendent talks about this piece, you move 15 seconds ahead, you miss the conversation right there, because a couple sentences could be exactly what you were looking for. So I do make them thorough intentionally, and I do watch the videos and re-watch them, so I'm making sure I'm quoting everyone, everything's correct, and, you know, parents have reached out to me and said they really appreciate it, so they don't have to watch a three-hour meeting and they can spend 10, 15 minutes understanding what happened.
So let's see if we, let's see if we can get to, so I jotted down, just, I think almost to a person, everyone said something about public comment and outreach. So can we come up with, so public comment, can we come up with something that we could put into effect fairly quickly? Anyone have a concept they want to float? See if we can.
Yes.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Fred.
David, go ahead.
Well, public comment, I'm just going to go back to what I said during COVID. I would really like to work with WHCA, as long as they're willing to work with us, to create a virtual waiting room using Zoom or using some other thing, whatever we can do to get it on the Promethean board, and then kind of just spend 15 minutes, 15, 20 minutes and say, all right, well, we have this many people waiting, they've checked in, we can verify they're from this town, or, you know, Whitman or Hanson for public comment, and then they speak, and if there's anything inappropriate, we can mute them, move on, whatever. And as other committee members have said, we don't have to answer them, we can just listen in, hear what they have to say, and if there's anything that we think we should add to an agenda item next meeting or at the following meeting after that, we can do it. But I think the purpose of public comment is to hear what people have to say, so we can sit on it, think about it, and then come back with a better plan. So I would like to move as soon as possible to do some sort of, some sort of virtual comment if we can, and go from there.
Okay.
But yeah.
Fred?
I don't know, logistically, and, you know, where we're holding meetings, quote-unquote, in person, you know, if you can combine the Zoom element, that would be an interesting thing to find out about. But at least initially, you could, by our next meeting, have, you know, Q and A with emails, you know, that people can submit their questions, thoughts, and ideas and have them read. That would give us something, you know, pretty much right away.
Okay.
Can I just make a suggestion, just the school committee where I teach, they've been doing Zooms and it's been chat boxes, and one of the issues has been funneling, because someone will ask a question, and then it'll be answered, and then 10 questions later, the same question will get asked, and then it's, you know, it's human nature, you know. So if we're going to do the live public comment, which I think is very important and we need to do it, we also need to find a way to funnel the questions, so that even if it's just responding to someone and saying, you know what, five minutes ago, someone asked this question, we've already answered it, sorry. Because if we're only going to allow, I mean, someone was talking about 15 minutes of time, we really need to make it more streamlined for the public comment. I don't have an idea, sorry, for how we could do that, but that's just something that I would, I just know, we've had a ton of Q and As in my district, and the repetitive, like, people don't listen until it's their turn to talk, and we've got to find a way to streamline that, so that the information can get to people, you know.
Dan?
Jeff, the recent Governor Baker with the restaurants, have they, did the open meetings from 25 beyond yet, do you know?
I'm not sure yet. That's something, I mean, we have a couple weeks before the next meeting, I think we can look at how we can effectively bring in the public, either through technology or in person.
I think the, I think the techno, I mean, I'm just listening to our comments, I think the technology is the key. I mean, I think to a person, we said, the meetings aren't working, people aren't coming, so we've got to try and maybe experiment, whether.
And people are going to sit.
Zoom or all of the above.
If they can listen to a meeting on a Zoom, you can have it on your phone and kind of be half-listening, and then when it's time for public comments, I mean, I've done that, you know, and come in and say, I mean, I think that that way in this era, people are not going to come and sit through a three-hour meeting to wait for the last 15 minutes to say their thing, they're just not.
The public would have to be upfront, right after the pledge of allegiance, most likely.
Well, that's what I wanted to distinguish, because in pre-COVID, we Chair Hayes allowed members of the community to come up and speak as they wanted throughout the agenda, because it allowed for that. But with technology, are we distinguishing a public comment piece on the agenda, again, that would be right at the beginning, that if someone just had something to say, they came forward and said it, and then as we moved on to the agenda, public comment essentially would be closed, and we would not monitor that? So that's what I'm looking to distinguish.
That's how I was thinking of it, but I don't know if others were thinking, at least a start. David?
I just want to bounce off Hillary's idea real quick about streamlining. So I'm going to talk about what I was saying before with the policy subcommittee. There's a policy that we're going to be putting forth, recommend to the full committee for a vote, hopefully next meeting, and that really brings a lot of clarification. It's an MASC recommended policy, it talks about public comment, it talks about the procedure of how long it should last, a recommendation, how people would go about that, obviously. We're in COVID right now, but without COVID, for example, they would have people sign up and put their name right there, and then we would go from there. So I think when that policy comes out and everyone can kind of read it, and hopefully we approve it, if it gets approved, I think that'd be something to post online, and then we could even, you know, reiterate to our constituency what that entails and how that would work. So I think maybe it would even be worth kind of holding off on the public comment discussion to maybe next meeting when that policy comes forward, and figuring out how we would have public comment with this new policy if it's implemented.
But I do think we need to have public comment in the next meeting, because I'm, But I do think we need to have public comment in the next meeting, because I'm...
Yeah.
No, 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 I agree.
Just because, I mean...
We can even do it through email.
We don't know what school's gonna look like our next meeting, right?
Right, no, you're right.
And so we need to give, we need to give the public an opportunity to speak. My only concern is having that at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know when the best time to have it would be because if you have it at the beginning of the meeting, are we gonna throw away the agenda and just start answering questions from people? Or, and then I also don't think we should have it after every agenda item because we'll never get through the agenda. So I don't know what the best way to do that, maybe smack in the middle, maybe after the superintendent's report, because that seems to be things that, you know, have the meat of what people want to comment on.
Dan?
Yeah, usually when you do the public comments, it's right up front. They come up, if there's anything for them to hear, you'll listen. We're not gonna be replying back to them. You know, that's just their voice to tell us what's going on because we can't because it's not on the agenda. We don't know what they're gonna talk about. And we have to be cognitive because we've had speakers in the past come up, and they mentioned people's names. Soon as that's done, it's shut off.
If someone has a question, I'm sorry, if someone has a question at the public comment, and it's a question that pertained to something that happened at a previous school committee meeting, can it be answered or does it get sort of tables?
I think, and we can clarify this, Jeff, but I think basically if someone asked an operational procedural question, so, hey, Jeff, when are we gonna change what we're, you know, what kind, can we, can we talk about like standardized lunchtimes? Can we, you know, my child is in Cohort A, when can they go into Cohort B? Like, operational procedural, if I wanted to not go on the bus? I think that's perfectly fair, right? It would be the same as someone just picking up the phone and calling. I think where we're gonna have to be careful is, hey, I want to talk about start times. Or I wanna, I have a complaint against a teacher. That's where, okay, hold on, we can't do that here, so.
But they're allowed to express a comment, and that's really what it is. They can say a comment, right? And we're not bound to...
Chris?
Do you think it would be worthwhile or possible to get a volunteer to moderate the public comments? And maybe some of the public comments could be addressed by referring the individual to the building principal and how best to contact them with a number, you know what I mean? Like, so that we can conduct our meeting and, like, maybe to Dan's point, that there's a, there's a, there's a time slot in the beginning or wherever in the meeting that is, you know, allotted for that, but someone else is manning it? Because I know how difficult it is to, for Bob to utilize the chats and things like that. And everybody here is pretty engaged in the meeting and doesn't really have the ability to monitor anything like that.
Jeff, and we're throwing a lot at you, so I want to make sure we don't completely go off the rails here. What, do you have thoughts?
So I would prefer, and I think for structure of a meeting, having public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And if people bring in a comment, and I'm piggybacking on the school's start time. I'm resident so-and-so, I have an issue with the school's start time, I'd like to be heard on the next agenda. That's an opportunity for a comment that we're not responding to. Or people come in with a comment saying, you know, I think the budget should have whatever. It's not necessarily a response with this committee. I think it's an opportunity for someone to be heard and the committee not necessarily responding back and maybe inviting them back to the next meeting. But it's an opportunity to be heard, so it's not an interactive dialogue. And I think it should be limited to about 15 minutes, and we can do that via Zoom. And we'll experiment and tweak it, and I think we can become more masters of that piece of it. But I am, my concern about an open Zoom is the person who has a question, we answer the question or they have the comment, and then 25 comments come after that, or go off the rails. So I think we can structure that and actually, on our next agenda item, put the rules of engagement for the public so they have an idea. And we can use social media to get that out early, you know, or through the website. So I think, I think we can have an opportunity and try it and see how it works. Ideally, in the non-COVID world, we get people to come to a meeting because I think, I think it's, it's, it's a better dialogue when people are here present than behind a screen because we're not gonna necessarily see them. So I think we can, we can play around with the technology, and it's not overwhelming at this point. But I think that would be my preference to open it up to say, hey, look, do the pledge or whatever, and, and public comment is right at the beginning of the meeting, even before we get into the minutes. And we're not necessarily deviating, or if they have a comment about an agenda item, they can have their say prior to us diving into the meeting.
Chair?
Yes, Fred.
Just for everyone's information, I did take the liberty of looking up the governor's new ruling. And the limit to indoor gatherings remains at an maximum of 25 people for all communities.
Thank you.
Dan?
Yeah, if you don't, if you want a good example of this, look at like the Board of Selectance meeting at the beginning of theirs. They open it up for public comments. Most of the time, just like us, they're not gonna be able to reply back, but it's a way for the public to say, you know, hey, you know, my street sidewalks aren't being done. All right, now it goes off to the town to go look at it. That's a good example of what we're gonna have to set up.
So Jeff, do you think it would be, I mean, I, so I want to get, as much as anyone, I want to get something done, right? But at the same time, I want to make sure we do it right. So you think this is something that we could have in place at the start of our next meeting? Or this is something that you'd want to build upon?
No, I think we can have it in place at the start of our next meeting.
We'll try it.
I don't see a reason why not. As long as the majority of this committee, and you don't have to vote, but I get an eye roll that says, hey, we'd like it at the beginning, and then we can, we can tweak as we go along. But we can do that, and I'll experiment how we can do that virtually with folks to make sure that they're heard.
Plus, the cheer has to, cheer controls it anyways.
Absolutely, I mean, I think you might want to delegate to Jeff or somebody has to control that in waiting room.
Dana's gonna be back in the, in the back of the room.
But so there's probably a way to do that, and then really, from the Zoom, we're probably just playing the audio, right?
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Maybe we can somehow get to WHCA and bring them in, but for the first one, if they could just be heard.
If that, if that's something the direction the committee wants to do, we'll absolutely look into it and make sure it's, it's on the agenda for next meeting, and there's an opportunity for the public to comment, right?
Chair?
Yes, Fred.
The one thought I had is why not allow participants the same way I'm participating right now on the conference call? You could, we could publish a number and perhaps a different meeting idea, something. You know, the only problem is you're going to probably have a lot of people in the waiting room, and I don't know concernably if you can control that.
And that's my shaking my head concern right now is I'm not sure. So let me look into seeing how we best can, and pilot this out for our next meeting.
Yeah, because I think Zoom is conducive to waiting rooms and holding and muting and a conference call. You're gonna be, you know, if you have 20, 20 people all speaking at the same time, you're gonna get 20 people all speaking at the same time. All right, good, so it sounds like we have an action item. I think overall, a really good conversation. I think the only other question I would have for all of you is, you know, what do we want to do to tackle outreach? Is that a subcommittee? Because I think there was a lot of tremendously really good ideas about getting out. Is that a subcommittee that we want to form? Or is that a discussion that we all want to? And I know this is a lot of time and energy for everyone to do.
I'd say so.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to do a subcommittee or do you want to do a separate?
I, I do like the idea of a subcommittee in the long run, but I think in the short term, I'd be interested in getting everyone's input on how to form that, you know? And what is, what direction we want to go in, you know?
I second that. I think more committee overall discussion moving towards a subcommittee.
Yeah.
So same thing, I know it's getting late, but maybe we could all agree on like, here are three things we're gonna do. We're gonna, whatever, we're all gonna write a newspaper article, we're all gonna go to a PTO, whatever that is, but maybe we come together and agree on an action step. Or two, or three, yes? Is that what we're thinking?
Tonight?
At the, I was thinking the next, I'm game, but I...
No, I, I think it, yeah, let's think about it and come back to it and do it next meeting. I think that would be best.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, I'm done.
All right. So before I take a, a vote to adjourn or get a motion to adjourn, I just, Chris, I know this was your initiative, and I think it's crucially important, as cumbersome as some of this stuff is to deal with, I really appreciate your leadership, and I think it's, it's something that's really gonna benefit the district going forward.
No, I think this is a group effort. I think, I think all of our intentions are really good. I think we have a good group. I think everyone's intentions are good. I think the structure makes it really hard to have a conversation. It's just hard, so I'm glad we kind of, hopefully, we're able to do that tonight, share, listen. I saw everyone like kind of taking notes, so honestly, if we can't get engaged here, we're not gonna be able to.
Just one more thing before you adjourn. So I appreciate all the feedback today. We'll be putting together some things for the next agenda. I want to make sure that there's always education, and kids is part of a focus for our meetings. And I said this at one meeting, getting away from always the money talk. So we'll always have something around goals or the strategic plan at a meeting coming forward. And then for the next meeting, it is listed as October 14th. I'm making a formal request if we can do it on the 21st. I have some personal things I have to deal with, and Michelle's gonna be on vacation, so there's no way within the next two weeks she's gonna be able to put together what we've talked about today. So if we can move the meeting to October 21st at 7:00, I would appreciate that.
I'd make the motion to move the October 14th to the 21st meeting at 7:00. Fred's second. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Dawn?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Chris, my scriven is yes as well.
And I'm a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fred. Thank you. Yeah, okay, I detained the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Second by Dan. Roll call, Fred?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.